I'm going to call to order the September 12th, 2019 meeting of the Sherburne Select Board. We'll start with the Town Administrator reading the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First, we'll accept, amend or approve the agenda, and then a period of public comment. And then consent agendas, payroll warrant, next meeting dates of September 26th, October 10th, October 24th, and then minutes of May 9th, May 23rd, June 6th, August 1st, and September 5th, all 2019. And then 7:15, a tax rate classification hearing is scheduled with the assessor Wendy Alasi. And consideration of revenue anticipation note with Heidi Doyle, Treasurer. And a discussion regarding Pine Hill Access Road with Dr. Andrew Keough, Superintendent of Schools. Consideration of proposed Coolidge-Kendall ground testing plan regarding development, Mark Mastriani of Pulte and Matt Leidner of CDG. Consideration of accepting Department of Conservation and Recreation grant, David Colleen, Town Forest Committee. Then consideration of developing a Farm Pond opening closure gate policy with the Select Board. And consideration of 2020 annual town meeting dates of April 28th and April 30th for backup date and already reserved. Under routine business, Finance Director report with consideration of reserve fund transfer with the Planning Board. Town Administrator report, consideration of sustainability coordinator designation and related intermunicipal agreement, IMA. And then selectmen reports. And then adjourn to executive session not to return to open session. The two exemptions are MGL Chapter 30A, Section 21A, subsection 3, to discuss strategy with respect to threatened potential litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigation position of the town and the Chair so declares, library. And MGL Chapter 30A, Section 21A, subsection 2, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, fire chief, contract.
Thank you, David. Do we have any changes?
I have a suggestion.
Okay.
I think I brought this up at prior meetings. I would very much like to see at every meeting, a, some kind of brief report on the status of the library, because I keep getting asked about that. It's not even safe for me to go into the post office these days without people asking what's going on with the library. Couldn't we have on each agenda and item of even a few sentences, even if nothing is going on, to say that nothing is going on, or if something is happening?
Let me ask these, I mean, if you guys-
I didn't prepare anything tonight. One thing I will say is that this week, the library has FAQs on their website, so this week on Monday, I sent it to the Save Our Sherburne, whatever SOS Group is, the FAQ, link to the FAQs. And then it was posted this week on Nextdoor Sherburne also, the link to the library's, they call it FAQs, it's their latest update. So it's, it's an August update that's on their website, but it got broadcast out to SOS and Nextdoor this week.
For the next meeting, though, maybe we could, under the selectmen's reports, just have, as you said, just a brief-
Yeah, yeah.
...update.
I will say, though, that 95% of my involvement is basically relations with council, and I almost don't want to risk it. Almost everything I have to say would be executive session.
Yeah, that's why-
I'm not as involved, frankly, with like, day-to-day what's going on there, but I'm the one that's kind of, you know, involving council and looking up and I'm protective, and I'd be concerned.
I think a brief, some, the FAQs are fairly detailed. I think a brief summary-
Yeah.
That's a great suggestion.
I understand, I understand that. Okay, I'll take that one.
Great.
Thank you. So I think, do I have a motion to approve the agenda as?
It's almost.
All in favor? All right. Public comment, and two people signed up, both related to Farm Pond, I think it was both Deborah Kennedy and Laura Van. Can we wait until we get to the Farm Pond agenda item? Is that okay?
Yeah, totally fine.
Or do you want to speak now?
I think it makes sense to go with Farm Pond.
Yeah, well, that's what I figured. If it was to that specific item, I'd rather have you wait, and then I'll-
Thank you.
-open it up to public comment at that time.
Yeah, and that's been a pretty consistent policy. If it's an agenda item-
Okay.
-it becomes bifurcated.
Thank you very much. I just don't want to take it out of order. I don't want people that come later not to hear what you have to say. Great, thank you. For the consent agenda, we have three items. Do I have a motion to accept, or do we have any changes?
So moved, accept.
Second. All those in favor? Okay, good. So the next thing on our agenda is the tax rate classification hearing, but it's set for 7:15, so we can't really start it before then. So Heidi, can you jump in next with your consideration of revenue anticipation note?
Good evening, Heidi Doyle, Town Treasurer. I'm here tonight to ask the Board to approve going forward with the revenue anticipation note in the amount of $1.8 million. Historically, this has been a different, a difficult time for the town of Sherburne. Our fiscal year starts July 1st, but revenue doesn't come in. It's not due until November 1st, starts coming in maybe end of September, but by October 1st, we start seeing a steady stream. So the town has to cover about four months, which is one-third of the budget upfront from July until this October timeframe. And we do not have four months of reserve on hand prior year, from the prior year to cover this time, primarily the way our bond payments have been set up, and we have a huge Middlesex County retirement amount that's due July 1st. We used to have a lot more free cash, which is essentially like the savings account or similar to retained earnings, if some people are familiar with that concept. And we've been spending that consistently over the last several years for different equipment. So we're in a position now where the savings account is really gone. Last year, we squeaked by. That was my first year. This is my second year watching, and the gap has been growing. So we can no longer sustain this type of budget funding moving forward, and we're projecting, just as of this week, Sharon and I have been working every week watching the cash flow, that we'll have a $1.6 million deficit by the end of September. And even getting taxes coming in, we usually get about $700,000 in the first week of October. That's not going to help cover this gap. So we need to do a borrowing. We'll be probably borrowing for about two months. Based on the number of borrowings we've had, we've had to wait 15 days to be able to go. This is the earliest I can bring it up, and the fastest I can push it through is to try and get money for next week. So the impact of this type of situation is, it could affect our AAA rating in towns when you go to talk to Standard and Poor, and they look and see, you know, if you've had this, what have you done to remedy it. By moving to quarterly taxes, we're showing that we're improving our fiscal management. I think we're being proactive in taking this approach, and quarterly taxes will actually greatly improve our cash flow because we'd be getting about $3 to $4 million in August. So that makes, it helps, even our stream out is going to make a really big difference going forward.
And that begins next, just for everybody, I know it was voted on at town meeting, but it begins in the next fiscal year. We had a year lag, so that's why this year-
We're stuck.
-we don't have that first payment, and it doesn't start until the next fiscal year.
Right. So I'd also like to invite the public, I'm going to hold some Treasurer's Office hours next Monday, September 16th, from 7:00 to 8:00 p.m. here at the Town Hall, to have an informal discussion. I'd be happy to go in depth on where we stand on the cash flow, long-term debt, where that's looking like, and where we stand. OPEB has, have had different questions. So if anyone has questions, I'd be happy to sit and talk and research and give some people ideas of what we're working on. So my recommendation is to ask the Board to vote to approve a revenue anticipation note of $1.8 million, and to set up a signing time next week, preferably Tuesday night or Wednesday night, if that works. It would just need a vote, just three people to show up and sign the bond notes that we've had.
So I'm going to move approval, but I wonder if I can make that motion so that we don't have to physically all show up at a convened meeting, namely to approve this and to have us come in individually and sign the papers. So the motion I want to make is to approve the bond as proposed by you without the need for any further authorization.
Well, we could-
The only thing-
-commit it separate times.
The only thing I need is to have the town clerk witness, she's here witnessing the vote tonight, but I believe she will need to be here to witness your signing, so as long as it can be done with, we can coordinate with Jackie and get three.
Your business hours, could we, could we do that, do it that way?
Yeah, I mean, I can come in at a different time.
I mean, one of, three of us could probably stop in during your regular business hours too and sign it.
Yeah, that's- If it's in your office, then-
Yeah, that's perfectly fine.
Yeah. I don't need a formal meeting.
It needs to be Tuesday or Wednesday, because Thursday I'm going to be gone at the clerk's conference.
Okay.
But Carol will be here.
Okay, so either you or Carol.
Yeah, so Carol will be here on Thursday, though.
Great.
Couldn't we tentatively set it for Tuesday?
Well, they will, if, I'm going to have this go to bid on Monday, and then they express me the forms for Tuesday, so I may not have it till Tuesday by 3:00.
I had one question, and I'm sorry if I missed it. You might have stated it. So by the time we pay this off, when the revenue comes in, what's your estimated, how much interest do they go pay?
It's, I'm not sure what they're going to charge on this type of a note, you know, but if we're looking at 2%, and we're looking at about two months, it's going to be under, my guess is like $5,000 to $6,000 total.
Okay.
You know, I quickly, I haven't done all the math out, and this is new for me going forward on this type of a note.
That's kind of good.
Yeah. It's $550 for our advisory fee on any note we file, if it's under $3 million.
Do we have a, Paul made a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any more discussion? Not, all those in favor? Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Close enough to, we're three minutes short of 7:15.
Heidi, it looks like it's going to run about $3,000 a month, from my quick calculation.
Is that 2% roughly?
Yep.
Okay.
What about the town meeting dates doing that?
Oh, we could do, we could jump to that, that's a good idea. We just have to wait till 7:15 on the dot to do the tax rate hearing. So number eight on the agenda is consideration of 2020 annual town meeting dates of April 28th, April 30th. I think it's standard doing it that last week of April of the last few years.
So this is at Linquist Commons-
Yes.
-over, and so the space has been reserved?
Yes.
And it fits into their, their schedule, which limits us. We just can't pick any date that works for us. We have to integrate ourselves into all the activities that are going on there, and Dover has its town meeting there also.
Right. I think they usually hold theirs in the beginning of May, right?
In the beginning of May.
Right.
So I would move to accept the recommendation and establish the town meeting dates of April 28th and April 30th, 2020.
Second. All those in favor? Great.
My favorite one night also. My favorite one night instead of two also.
We'll vote for the 28th, but not the 28th.
It's supposed to rain on the 28th.
Jack, is that a word for that?
One night.
Yes.
All right. Wendy, if you want to come up, I've, I've got to read the-
Hearing notice.
Hearing notice. All right, so at 7:15, the Sherburne Select Board will hold a public hearing on Thursday, September 12th at 7:15 p.m. in the Select Board's meeting room of Town Hall, 19 Washington Street, Sherburne, Mass. The central issue to be discussed during this tax classification hearing is whether all five classes of property, residential, open space, commercial, industrial, and personal shall be taxed at the same rate or at different rates for fiscal year 2020. Interested taxpayers are urged to attend the hearing written in oral statements from interested taxpayers will be accepted and taken into consideration after hearing. From the Sherburne Board of Assessors. So I guess the hearing is open, so I'm going to let you-
Sure. Wendy Alasi, Director of Assessing, happy to report, I have to say first, that our tax rate did go down this year by 16 cents, and that was as a result of about $13 million in new growth and increases in property values. So although the rate went down, there will most likely be an increase in tax bills.
For some people.
For some people, yes. There will be an increase. So the reason for this hearing, as you stated, is to vote to adopt a single tax rate or a split tax rate. A split tax rate would shift more burden onto commercial properties. Historically, Sherburne has never done that. It's more for communities with the larger commercial base. And also to decide if you want to offer a small commercial exemption, which, again, doesn't really make sense for this community, and a residential exemption, which, again, doesn't make sense for this community. That's more for high rental areas and second home areas. So that's the purpose of the, of tonight, and that's the decision that you need to make. And I don't know if you have any questions, but I can tell you, in the future, the, for next year, there's the 32 homes going over at the Fields, and that's in progress. 59 North Main Street, they're on the market, probably 869 each, and there's 12 of them, and two have already received occupancy permits. So that's going to, you know, that, we're going to have a lot of growth next year.
Even more than you-
Even, I believe, more than, and as I'm always cautious to say. And also, the Whitney Farms, which is now Meadows Edge, they sold three of their affordable units in 2019, and they sold two other units, and they also have two on the market and one going on the market. So that, about two and a half will be new growth next year as well. So that's finishing up. We also have the new property on 56 North Main Street, which is on the market for about 1.5, 1.6. So all of those things combined, it should be a good growth year.
Are any of those properties already included in the FY 2020 new growth figure of 250,000?
No.
None of the North Main Street or the-
No. What I did with the Fields, which is on, yeah, Southfield now-
Washington.
Washington, Western, on the corner of Washington, Western, and 59 North Main Street is when a condo development receives certification or approval to develop the land, and it gets to a stage where they're starting to build, or they have the plans and everything's moving forward. What I did was I took the sales price of one of the properties, and I divided it by the number of units, and I came up with about $185,000 per unit.
Per lot.
So I, per lot, right? And so what helped this year was I was able to contact the Department of Revenue and make sure that this, you know, was the proper way to do, to do this, because it's going to be generating quite a bit of money, and if someone were to put that on the market and it's ready to, ready to go, it would sell for that. So that's where about 60,000 additional new growth dollars came in for those two properties. And then in addition, next year, we will get a significant amount of growth as well. So it'll be a good year or two for new, for new growth.
So can I make an observation?
Yes, sure.
One of the things that I was very impressed with was that the town did not use its full taxing capacity. In other words, the town is limited by Proposition 2.5 as to how much it can impose-
Yes.
-in terms of taxes on the residents of the town. We did not use that power to go to that level.
Right.
Your report indicates that there's a million dollars-
Over a million.
-that we could have, by we, I mean the town meeting advisory and all the department heads, there's a million dollars more of taxes that could have been imposed lawfully, which we refrained from doing.
Yes.
So the, the favorable drop in our tax rate down to this-
1946.
1946 is in part a result of restraint by-
Yes.
-town meeting, by the department heads, by town government.
Mm-hmm.
And for that, I'm thankful to everybody. Want to extend praise to advisory, to, to this board, to-
All the budget makers.
All the budget makers. Well done, all the way around.
Yes.
Well done, Wendy, on that side.
Yeah, actually, George, if I could make a quick comment?
Sure.
The, the tax rate analysis is a six-page report that was done by the Board of Assessors, and we talk often about the town having all sorts of value from volunteers, unpaid volunteers. Your, the Board of Assessors, I don't know what Bill Seymour does, but I know he's very bright. Kina Miskovich is a terrific lawyer-
Yes.
And Michael Goldstein's a professor of finance.
Excellent, yes.
And this is such an easy and well-written report, it's just, it's a concrete example of volunteers providing real service and expertise to the town, so thank you to you and to the Board.
Okay, thank you.
You have, either of you have any comments? Yeah?
I guess my one comment is-
Sure.
I know it's just, it's really is an arbitrary number, but it does mean a lot to get under 20, it does. Because that's a metric that people look at when they actually look at homes, they look at school ranking, and they look at tax rate. And actually have that could actually have a snowball effect, even help greater, higher price sales.
Increase the values.
Exactly.
Exactly, yes. And the values, I did a quick and, very quick analysis on the 19 sales, because I'm still stuck in 18. And in 2019, the, there have already been in eight months, 66 sales, and there are actually 66 properties on the market. The average sales price for this year, for right now, is 941,000. In 2018, there were 71 sales, and the average sales price was 902.
That's quiet.
So-
He's trying to, I looked at it a few weeks ago, there wasn't as many, there was only like 47 or whatever.
Did you see that first? All of a sudden, yeah.
When I looked at it, there was nothing over 2 million, like, it had only been 1 million, so there was no outlier that pulls it up, and that's actually a solid number.
I think that's an important one, I was just going to talk about that, because I think one of the challenges in when we talked about budgeting this year for new growth, was we were concerned that the higher-priced homes, maybe the assessments on those would need to come down, because we don't see-
Yes.
-things over 1.5 selling very fast, or the prices have to drop before they-
Yes, they did go down this year.
Those did, okay, the higher-
Yes.
Okay.
There are about 30 homes around Farm Pond, and the Board and I worked together, I contacted the assessor in Wellesley, we discussed, because they're, they have Lake Wobbin, and they had noticed the same thing, that these high-end homes on ponds just aren't selling at, at the rate that they used to be. And so what I did with that was I reduced the land value by $250,000 per lot around the pond, and it brought the values in line to where they needed to be.
If you keep the gate closed, it actually increases the value of the loans.
That being said, the, the newer high-end homes are selling.
Yeah.
Right, and-
Construction.
-the new construction, Green Lane went very quickly, so, but I think that there's a lot of turnaround right now. Nine ranch homes sold within one year, and I was able, because of that, because we had the data, I was able to increase ranch homes, so all of the ranch home, ranch-style homes all increased as well. So yes, we had the dip in Farm Pond, no pun, but there was a, you know, there was increases in Colonials and ranches, a slight increase in antique properties, so.
So while we're talking about value, I read, I think in Boston Magazine, that Dover Sherburne High School was ranked number one in the state.
Yes.
And that's always been a driver, the people who talk to me when they tell me what brought them to the community, while they mention open space and-
Right, yeah.
-those kinds of things, and Farm Pond and other assets. The schools has always been a very big draw.
Absolutely, and anytime, I, I have this conversation probably a few times a week with taxpayers or someone wanting to come in, you know, to purchase a home, and they want information on their property, and I always try to let them know that, you know, you're getting a private school education. Yes, you're paying more in taxes, but if you were interested in sending your children to private school, it's, you know, you're really getting a, a good deal, you know.
So is there a surcharge for families with school-age kids?
No. So anyway, I know you guys have a busy night, and I don't want to keep you, so I have a form here, once you make your decision as to whether you want to keep a single or split rate, and whether you want to adopt, adopt a, a split rate residential exemption or commercial exemption.
Well, could I move that we have a single tax rate?
Second. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Okay.
And was there a second thing we have to vote on, or just that we're doing a single tax rate?
Uh, nope, that was all.
We don't have to.
Oh, okay, there's no motion.
There's, yeah.
You don't want us to vote no on the other two items?
Oh, on the, I figured it was all together, the residential exemption.
So can I move that there be no residential exemption and-
And no commercial exemption, small commercial exemption.
Second.
Yeah.
All those in favor? Thank you very much, Wendy.
Thank you, I have this for you to sign.
Really appreciate this report and the work that you put into it.
Thank you. I actually-
Chairman is her first, or we all?
Yes.
So I have voted the same way for more than 20 years.
Just now.
Yes.
Hasn't changed.
Speaking of our number one schools, Dr. Keough, you are number, you're next on the agenda.
Congratulations on being number one.
Can we just put a surcharge on Andy's property?
So I, I don't want to take any credit for it, having only been here for a short time. But I will, I will remind you guys, as I always do, it all started right here in 1969 in this room, second grade classroom with Mrs. Jacobs.
Oh, you had Mrs. Jacobs too?
Right here. Right in this classroom.
I don't think you should have.
So, um-
I had her downstairs.
Most likely didn't ever leave town, that should have been me in the yearbook. So, so the reason I'm here is to, is to ask the Board of Selectmen to, to take into consideration the fact that we have, the school committees have voted to change our start times at Dover Sherburne across the board. So our elementary school start times, and this is in response to a lot of research and a really lengthy process of looking at the real dangers and risks that come with teenagers, they're kind of internal clocks setting them up to be tired, begin getting tired at about 11 o'clock, and then we pop them up at 6:00 in the morning, they need nine hours sleep, and they're averaging less than seven. That results in, just as we all know, those of us who've ever lacked sleep, you're not on your toes, you're not as sharp, you're not as effective, depression is a serious issue, increase in accidents. So a lot of research went into this process, and the decision was finally made on April 30th by the school committee to accept my recommendation, which was to basically flip those times and essentially push the elementaries a little later. But a little later means, instead of 7:40, which is when our secondary schools start now, it will be 7:50 or as close to 8:00 as we can get. Again, that's kind of like the tax rate, we'd love to get to 8:00, we're not sure we're going to get there, because we obviously have to get our secondary kids to their school, which will start 40 minutes after the start of the elementaries. So if we start them, dropping them off in that 20 of to 10 of range, it's going to be a challenge. But that's not really my point. My point is that, any of you who have experienced the secondary school challenge of drop-off at, at the region knows that there's- challenge of drop-off at, at the region knows that there's about a twenty to twenty-five-minute window where everybody converges on the site, in the midst of commuter traffic coming down Harding Street from Medfield and other traffic coming down Farm Street in Dover, it becomes one jammed-up circle, and our buses are trying to get through that. That's our current situation. That's about to change in one year. One year from now, our times will flip. And our elementary schools will not be dropping off in the center of Sherburn around, somewhere in the range of twenty of to quarter of eight. So, those of you who've been in town for a while know, that's a real pinch point for us in this town. What I'm worried about is the same thing I'm worried about currently at the region. If you've been at the region during the drop-off, people get impatient, they're in a hurry, they don't form nice, clean lines, they drop their kids off and are bolting off to work, or wherever it is they need to go. It creates a pretty dangerous situation. I'm envisioning a much more dangerous situation, quite frankly, up at Pine Hill. And I know that the community discussed the emergency access road and completing the emergency access road. And I respect that process that went through, and it went to town meeting and it did not pass. But this is a whole entirely different situation that we're talking about, and I'm really concerned about it. So, I'm asking the Board of Selectmen to consider the appointment of a, a new committee to look at this. And with a sense of urgency, I must admit.
So, could I?
Yeah, go ahead.
React to some extent, because I'm the guy who's been on the board longest, I'm the repository of corporate history here. In order to get that road built, it had to be limited for emergency use for two reasons. Number one, we had the opposition of the neighbors who felt that they would be impacted by a road in general use. And secondly, we had to get some special legislation passed that involved use of town forest land. So, we had to make representations to the state that this would only be occasional emergency use. The upshot of all that was that any change of use really has to be voted on by town meeting. That is, it is beyond the scope of this board to vote, or of a committee, or any committee in the town, to vote that that be a regularly-used road. It's, it's a material change in the commitment that was made to the voters, to the neighbors, and to the state. That doesn't mean it can't be changed. And in addition to everything else, the General Court has appropriated a million dollars for us to build a bigger road. It's been sitting there. And bond authorization that we've never drawn upon, and we've never drawn upon it, because town meeting has never voted to actually go to a, a bigger road. We did have plans prepared that would make it into a regular road. And as part of that, there was a need for sidewalks, because we didn't want students being hit by vehicles. And then there was a need for lights, because meetings often took place at night. We didn't want a long, dark, unsafe road where somebody could get injured. So, when you put all those ingredients together, the cost of the road is in ex, was in excess of a million dollars four, or five, six years ago. Now, I would imagine it's even more expensive.
Paul, not, just a quick interruption. You're talking about widening Pine Hill Lane.
No, no.
The, the emergency access.
Emergency access.
Finishing the emergency.
Thinking about a road from Pine Hill School down the hill.
Yeah.
To Route sixteen.
So, Paul, just a quick question. Was the parcel, I mean, we saw before the planning board, I think it was a fifty-foot right away. Was that fifty feet, was that taken out of Article ninety-seven, so it's no longer Article ninety-seven?
Yes.
Always, okay. So, it wasn't like a change of use, just, so we wouldn't have to go back to the General Court for approval?
We would not have to go back.
You have a clarification?
Yeah, go ahead, Al.
As far as creation to, to Paul.
Sorry.
What it was, that was town forest land. What the town needed to do was transfer that town forest land. In exchange, town forest was giving a parcel land, I can't, maybe Dave Queen will, will renumber it. But there was never a restriction saying that we couldn't do the thing, but we had to transfer it out of town forest land to put, put the roadway in. But there was never a restriction saying it was limited to emergency use only. But it was a transfer out of town forest into the selectmen's control.
This was just.
As far as going with the neighbors, Paul, I worked very hard and talked a lot of it. I put a lot of time and energy into that. And I had most of the neighbors supporting it, there were one or two. But the land was taken from town forest. And what the town did was give land, exchange of land to town forest for that land. So, there was never a restriction saying it could only be used for emergency.
One thing, I think what you're looking for, just some clarification as well, I'd thank you for letting us know what's happened in the past. But I think the committee now would be looking at coming up with what the costs would be to finish this, if it's needed at this time, and then take it to town meeting in the spring. I think that would be the timing that you'd be looking at.
Well, that's, that, that would be my hope. I, I, and I'm not, I understand absolutely what Paul has said about, you know, concerns of neighbors, having been in, worked in several high schools with football games under the lights. I, I understand how challenging that can be for neighbors. But a football game under the lights is one thing. We're, we're actually talking about a pretty serious safety concern, in my opinion. I think it's a safety concern now, under our existing situation, where now we have people doing U-turns in front of the building instead of looping around. It's a really dangerous situation, and we should know better, frankly, as a community.
Absolutely. Just as a Pine Hill parent, last year my kids were straighted up Pine Hill twice. Because of an accident at the bottom of the hill, my wife was trying to get them for doctor's appointments. With one access to that, to where all our young children are, just not a safe situation. And also, Pine Hills are emergency shelter in town. So, it's, it's something that I think is very important that we, that we look at. Oh, Rick, go ahead, do you have to?
Yeah, just sort of real quickly, this is why I'm at the meeting tonight. I see a few members of the Public Safety Committee here, as well as the Traffic Safety Committee. We voted unanimously on both committees to support this effort. Dr. Keo and I had a great luncheon a few, several weeks ago, and we had a really fun discussion about this, so I just wanted to share that with you a little bit.
Rick, that's helpful, because that's one of the questions I had. In fact, I also wonder, the ex, the emergency Egress is very near what used to be the most dangerous intersection in town, Lake and Elliott. It's what, maybe a hundred and fifty yards, two hundred yards from that. Do we need a new committee? Or is this within the purview of Traffic Safety and Public Safety Committee?
Well, we, Dr. Keo and I actually discussed that at length, and we, we were kind of playing around with the idea of having a subcommittee of the Public Safety Committee to, to kind of go through this. But I'll, I'll leave that decision-making up to a doctor, and I've, I've committed to him to sit on that committee to be of as much assistance as, as I possibly can. I know Sean, I did the same chicken as well, so.
The key part, though, is getting the funds. So, there's going to be a need for additional appropriation, either locally, or going back to the state and seeing if we can get the state to pay for more money. And to do that, somebody needs to come up with a pretty solid cost to actually build the road. We have the plans, plans have already been done. We just, and we had those costed out. We just need those brought forward, so we know how much money and what we can get from the state to contribute toward those costs. And the net amount, then, would be the amount that we have to go to town meeting and seek an appropriation for that.
And so, that, therein kind of lies the challenge. I'm the school superintendent. I, I'm not as well-versed in kind of the procedures of the town. What I'm, what I'm here really asking for is your guidance and assistance, so that it can go through properly and have a fighting chance of approval at town meeting, because I think it's that serious. And I'm certainly willing to do everything I can on my part as the superintendent, but I agree that it, it would require input from people who understand navigating the waters of the state level and all of those other kind of components.
Go ahead, Eric, I know you had something, you've got something to add.
I mean, just, this, this add-on top of the rest of it, may all, to finish the access road is a no-brainer, because our own zoning laws actually limit dead ends to six hundred feet due to safety concerns, and it's well more than that. And it was installed at a time when, you know, Sherburn is a lot smaller. Right now, that intersection handles twenty-eight thousand cars per day, based on our recent mass DOT. The only thing is, I was at one of the public safety meetings, the only thing, just as a civil engineer, I see that that's going to be a challenge, which is why I do think you pull something that quicker, is if you want to signalize the intersection, because it was built right across a driveway. And now they're going to signalize a driveway. And I've done that, and it's not as easy as it sounds. So, that's going to be, that will be a challenge. I'm not saying I'm against it, whatever else, because I think that road does need to be finished. There's no question about that.
And so, and, and I agree that that's a challenge, and I, I think that's obviously a, a deeper conversation with the police department. Is it something, you know, sometimes communities will have crossing guards with the flashing school zone lights, which I think is a little different than a flat-out signal, which has never been a popular thing in Sherburn. We've, I know, discussed that before.
I actually want to hear from Sean on this. I know Paul said the plans that were done how many years ago. Can, can your, can you look at those and maybe take good stuff, like, because I know maybe they could be value-engineered in some way.
So, we have, I mean, one, one thing to keep in mind, of course, things change quickly in this business. That engineering firm, of course, doesn't exist anymore. The plans changed a little bit, because those were the plans before we even cut the road. So, after that got defeated, everyone remembers, I think, the next year, about two years later, we, we kind of short-funded it, cleared the road, built what's there now, which is pretty tough to even maintain and keep plowed, frankly, in the winter. We do, obviously, we have to, but it falls into.
Just one second. There, there's a number of people in the hallway. There are a couple of seats up front, and there's some chairs.
We also could take about thirty seconds to put another.
Put another row up here, if you'd like. That'd be great. I know there's a lot of people accumulating in the hallway out there. Yeah, I guess we could finish the discussion on this, but, or talk while we're doing this, but.
I'm interested in the thought process and the input from Public Safety, Traffic Safety, and you, Dr. Keo, whether or not, do we need a broader committee, or is this primarily a Public Safety, Traffic Safety issue? I, I, it's, it's not clear to me. I, in terms of building a consensus, I can see the value of a broader new committee. But I'm, I'm actually interested in everyone else's input. I don't, I don't have a firm opinion on whether or not we need to form a new committee.
I think the cost system is a pretty big thing, though, so I don't know whether that committee would be the one you want to do in the process. They could certainly hire it out, but you may want.
I think it's, I think it's a group, it's a committee, not so much of other volunteers, it's somebody from the schools.
Yeah.
From, with Sean and Rick and, you know, the members that can really give the input. And then somebody, I think from Sean's perspective, it would be, like, we'd want to get an estimate from him as to what the costs would. I mean, that, I think that's the big thing.
I think it hurts all volunteering too.
Oh, great.
My concern, again, going back to these commitments made, this was a commitment I made for the town with, with then gov, the governor, more to get him to sign that bill. And the commitments to the neighbors was made, I believe, at town meeting and by a number of town leaders. I wasn't the only one. But it was a, was a way to get the neighbors to go along with this emergency road. And because those commitments were made, yeah, they're, they're not in the law. But I'm the kind of person where I make a commitment, I want to live by it. So, it does make sense to me to have some committee that would include the neighbors, so that their thoughts and their concerns can be addressed within the committee rather than on the floor of town meeting. Because if you just go to town meeting and say, hey, we needed a million dollars of appropriation, and let's vote it, you, you, you're still going to need a two-thirds vote, because it's going to be a borrowing.
Right.
It's much better, instead of playing out all the concerns of the neighbors about the lights shining on their houses and all of that, to have a discussion. So, maybe instead of having a light pole right in front of somebody's house, maybe you move the light pole back away. That, that kind of discussion is worth having.
Well, it seems like the planning board would be a good addition.
Us too. I think you want to have them involved. Frank, I know you were involved.
Right. I mean, one thing is, we're looking at the history of this. If we look at the last time around, is that this was a Pine Hill issue in a lot of ways, but a lot of parents thought this, you determine sometimes here, a no-brainer that it was going to pass. So, there weren't many Pine Hill parents there, there mainly, a lot of us gray hairs were there. And even so, that passed, I think it was one sixty to ninety-nine in favor. So, it wasn't like it was, it was put down. It didn't reach the two-thirds. I think it was about sixty-one percent. But in today's environment, nationally, or anywhere, sixty-one percent is a huge landslide in a way. So, I think it showed general support, and I think that parents of Pine Hill were aware that this issue was on the, on the ballot, and that it was in question, that we might get more support next time around.
Sean, did you have something to add, or?
Only that the, I think shortly after we, we would start, we'd probably need a little bit of funding, which, which could fall within my budget for some engineering support.
I, I thought the schools should pay for it.
Trying to keep the budget down.
Yeah, I trust him more, you're right.
I actually want to ask Erica a question. I know this is a good protocol, but you and I talked about this before on other areas. My understanding is a traffic light, you, you, people have seen those new traffic lights where it has like the yellow frame around it. The traffic light is a huge deal here. Like, it could be.
Quite a quarter million.
Quarter million dollars just for a traffic light. So.
A complaint.
We praised the tax rate, you know, half an hour ago. This is going to be a lot more money than people realize. And I totally support it, and I understand, particularly with the change in school, I'm not speaking negatively. This could easily be a two-million-dollar project, I think. If it was a million dollars five or six years ago, and we were going to put a quarter-million-dollar traffic light in, this is going to be a big investment.
I was just going to make a suggestion, and I'll rip the cart before the horse.
Yeah.
I mean, we have like ten intersections in town that would fall if I were to, we shouldn't start talking about that.
Yeah.
Analyze what we're doing.
Until we actually see it, like I said, I think maybe the plan from five years ago could also be value-engineered. There may be elements of it that may not be needed, or that's just a theory. But I think before we get down that far down the road, let's, let's put a group together that can really dig into this, so we can be ready for a spring town meeting.
Do we want to structure it, or maybe like, ask David to pull something together, you know what I mean? I mean, I think we know, we want, kind of want a true working group, not a political group, you know, and people kind of know what they're talking about.
Nancy, do you, do you have a question?
I, just a little more of a historical thing with this. We call it our emergency shelter, but they wouldn't let us have a foot shot clinic up there, because it didn't have the exit. So, we had to move the foot shot elsewhere.
If I can make a suggestion.
Yes.
Regarding to the neighbor concerns, I, I agree with you, Paul, and I totally understand, having been in a position where I've, I felt like I owned part of the decision or made commitments to people. I do, I, I like the idea of including and not excluding certainly neighbors who'd be interested in it. But I think, without question, whether there are neighbors on it or not, the neighbors have to be consulted in this process. So, they have to be made fully aware of what's happening, or what's being discussed, so that people don't find out at the, the last minute, the eleventh hour, what? I never heard anything about this. They should be brought up to speed that this is being discussed. I think that's just a, a good neighborly thing to do. And I know I would commit to that, so, as, as part of this.
Excellent, thank you.
So, David, what do you think, should we, do you want to?
Either the superintendent or I can name an advisory committee.
Okay, great, great. And it wouldn't be like an appointed committee that had to have. It would be more a working group that they can get some, get some stuff done.
Well, one thing I wonder, are they going to need a budget of the same also?
Well, that's, that's what Sean said. They're going to need some engineering.
How's some traffic, safety and traffic planning?
Yeah. So, I think that's the beginning, that'll be the first thing that they'll have to do, is figure out what they need, and if we have it within.
It's not within the budget, it'd be reserve fund transfer, in my book.
Yeah.
Okay. So, David, you'll work with Dr. Keo?
Yeah.
Sounds good.
Excellent. And Sean and Rick.
Great, absolutely.
Thank you very much, thanks for coming in.
Thank you very much.
Much appreciated.
If you could just make sure that the high school basketball team.
Oh, wait, you did. Ross too.
I'm now going to turn the baton over to my mother for the next portion of the beat up. All right. Thank you very much.
The next item on our agenda is the consideration of proposed Coolidge Kendall Ground testing plan with Mark Mastriani from Pulte and Matt Leidner from CDJ.
Good evening, board members. If I could, if you don't mind if I stand up because I have a plan here.
Great.
With me tonight. But we last met in August. We were before you to give an overview of where we were at, kind of a status update for the Meadow Brook Commons, Coolidge Crossing projects. And toward the end of that meeting, we talked about the, the need for municipal water to be brought to this project and that the plan is to bring it in from Framingham. That's the proposal, along Kendall Avenue and then down Coolidge Street. One of the big factors in that is the cost to do that work. And the, one of the biggest items in that cost is, or a large item in that cost is potential for ledge removal. And so we were asked at the end of the, toward the end of the meeting last month to provide a plan showing exactly where we propose to do ledge probing. So actually probe down and determine the depth to ledge. And we were asked to come back before you and present that plan. So shortly after that meeting, the following week, we met with Sean, Gylene out in the field. And Sean and I and members of the Pulte team walked the roadway and we were able to come up with a game plan at that time. We were waiting for certain utilities to be marked out at that time and they have since been marked out. So what we have provided here tonight is a plan that shows the, the length of roadway from the Framingham Town Line all the way to the project site frontage on Coolidge Street. It's about 4,000 lineal feet of roadway. And the plan is to probe approximately every 35 feet. And that will be adjusted in the field as appropriate. What we've shown on the plan are areas that are off limits because there's utility crossings. So there's, there's gas, there is some water toward the Framingham end of the road on Kendall Street in Sherburne. There's electric, telephone, underground communications. So they've all been marked out, they've all been measured out, and this plan accounts for those. So in that 4,000 lineal feet, there'll be certain areas where there'll be either no probing or limited probing based on the utilities. And the idea here is to go down portions of the road, do the probing in portions of the road that will be least impactful to the actual road service. So on Kendall Avenue, there's electric, overhead electric on one side and gas runs on the other side. So in talking and working with Sean out in the field, we determined that going right down the center line, actually right along the yellow line, which is outside the, the wear surface of the road, if you will, where the most traveled portion of the road would be appropriate and would be good as opposed to going down one of the actual traveled lanes. So the, the plan is to go down the, the center line on Kendall and then when we get over to Coolidge, the gas and the overhead electric actually run on the west side. So we can be off in the shoulder for almost the entire length of Coolidge that we're, we'd be doing the testing on. When we get very close to the project frontage, the electric does cross over and we have the same situation with gas and electric on the sides. So we would jump then to the center line for the last remaining portion approximately to the, the project frontage. We had talked about the number of potential probes at the last meeting and based on the actual lineal footage now that's been measured out and the areas that are, are off limits, we're actually down in, in the neighborhood of about 150 probes. And I think a number higher than that had been discussed at the last meeting.
115 or 150?
150. Plus or minus?
Sean, have you reviewed this plan? Like, what do you think?
Yeah, I walked most of it with them when, when we were out there. When I, of course, when I was there, we didn't have the entire gas line marked up, but I knew where it was anyway. It was my idea to use the center line because I'm driving over those holes in the, in the travel lane. It'd not be good. There's always a cold joint down the center line anyway, so that's usually where you have to motion seal it sometime during its life anyway.
There's no option to do it from the side of the road even?
Well, there is in a few places, but going up Kendall, for instance, when you take a left on Kendall, the whole way up the hill, the wires are, I mean, a truck can barely get under them. So you can picture, you know, an air, a drill rig isn't going to fit under that. So they wouldn't be off the road. And I, so you'd put it in where your right side tire is near the guard, which is the part of the road that always falls apart, or just put it in the middle.
It's less interesting.
The only person that drives in the middle is the plow truck that heads right down the crown of the road. They'll skim that thing flat this winter.
Are we at all, that road was recently repaved. Are we at all concerned about putting holes, having freeze fall damaging, you know, a pretty new road? I, the fundamental question is the same as yours, Jeff, which is can we get the same information by doing it at the side of the road without damaging the integrity of a newly paved road?
You could if you could do it at the side of the road. That's the point. You can't necessarily get to most of the sides of the road. If the overhead wires are right there, you can't do it.
So where we could do it, in areas we could do it in the side of the road and the shoulder, off the pavement, we're proposing to do that. But, but what we found when we went out there and once utilities are marked out, that there's certain sections of road that the sides are off limits. There's gas on one side, there's overhead utilities on the other. And while the preference would be to be in the shoulder for everything, it just, we can't do it that way, as Sean indicated. So where we need to be, because we're, we have issues and, not issues, but we have utilities on both sides. We have an issue with, with probing on the sides. We, we propose to be in the middle and, you know, the consensus out the field, like Sean said, was right in the center line. It was his idea, it was a good idea. It was, it was right in the center line. So people are not driving over those areas. We've also included with the submission, a specification, which we've also worked with Sean to, to draft up for filling the holes appropriately, compacting, paving them over, and then coming back at a later date to evaluate them and, and repair any, any issues.
I'm still concerned about it. I, I think there's smaller rigs that can fit under electric wires myself. But I think that also we should be looking at decreasing the frequency of the holes that have to be in the middle of the road. Maybe you go 50 feet or 60 feet instead of 35 feet. I, I just think a new road, we're doing this to help you get a cost estimate for our project. It's not a direct benefit to the town. I, I think there's a huge cost. We've probably spent $300,000 paving that road. So I'd, I'd like to see some kind of mitigation plan for Kendall. If that's the middle of the road, I think we should decrease the frequency then. And if you hit no ledge, if you go 60 feet and you're not, you do 60, you can go back if you have a section where you hit ledge. But if you haven't hit any in holes that are 60 feet apart, it's less likely that you're going to, you know, be encountering ledge. I, I think, I think the fewer holes, the better. Because I think it is going to impact the road. I agree with Chuck. Chuck?
So a couple of things to the concern. I mean, it would be nice to do less holes. It'd be nice to do none. Several things that go along with any road open permit is we're going to make them take out a surety bond, which will hold for some period during the warranty period of the road. Whether that be, normally with ever source gas, they tend to rip up the roads more than anyone else in town. And, you know, we hold it for two years. We don't make them hold a surety bond because they're always in town, but they, they pretty much warranty the road back to us for any damage for a couple of years. And we would do that with this. I mean, the intent is they're going to rip the whole road up all the way to Framingham. And then, you know, it's a different discussion of how they're going to rebuild it. I mean, they're not doing this with the antenna walking away with just a bunch of holes in it.
Well, any holes that we don't need, we would be better off without.
True. But we, we hold some risk because if they start ripping that road up and hit 300 feet of ledge, they're going to have Kendall Lane shut, Kendall Ave shut down for weeks hammering that ledge. We want to know that that's there, whether it's our cost or not. It's going to be our disruption. Make no mistake about that. It's going to be disruptive when they close.
Do we need to know what the ledge situation is if we're going to ever make a knowledgeable decision on whether.
No, I completely, I'm a civil engineer. I completely.
So if you recall from the last discussion, we were split two to two on this, with Jeff and I on one side and Chuck and George on the other. The concern that I had from the get go was that if we bring public water in from Framingham, state law says that anybody along that way can connect to it. And so we are opening up a whole part of the town to very intense development. And so I had asked for an opinion from town council about whether or not we could do a restrictive intermunicipal agreement with Framingham that would basically say that we don't, we won't be taking on that risk of explosive development along the route of this water main between where it crosses from Framingham to where your development is. And I see in the notes here, it says, hold on town council opinion. So my question is, why is there a hold on a town council opinion regarding a possible restrictive IMA?
Actually, what I was referring to is just, we may have to hold because we don't have the opinion. It wasn't really hold on getting the opinion. We, we asked for their opinion already from town council and then earlier in the week it was assigned to a different council. So we're working with great corvo now. I have a call scheduled tomorrow, but there's no opinion to.
So my concern is just to carry this point into the end zone. If it turns out that we can't allow this development, no, we can't allow this water connection to the development from Framingham, then I don't want to be putting 150 holes on a street that town council says is going to open up this hole into town. I'd rather have town council tell me, here's a way to do it. And if there's a way to dupe this pipe without having eight or nine 40B developments all in a row on that, that section of town, if there's a way to do it, I'd like to answer that question first rather than digging up the road.
Well, the good thing about, if we move forward with this development, it would put us on the safe harbor so there wouldn't be a lot more 40Bs. Or we could say no to 40Bs, correct? Isn't that the, one of the reasons we're talking with this?
Affordable housing.
Right, exactly. We'd be over our 10% and therefore they're not going to, we're not going to be bombarded with 40Bs.
Well, there are other things other than 40B.
Right. Well, that's what you had just said. So I just wanted to clarify that.
Yeah.
So, did you have a comment, Mary?
Uh, no. He said what I was going to say.
Oh, okay. Sean?
Well, I might suggest, I mean, we asked them to come back. I met with them. They came back. However, the answer to that question is, isn't going to change this plan. We're, they're either going to do it or not.
I'll say this.
I would suggest we just don't ask Pulte to come back and ask me to come back with Pulte a third time. I mean, you could approve the plan. They're not going to start drilling tomorrow. We, we still have a few other things to hammer out. You could approve it pending legal council opinion, discussions with NADIC, whatever else you need to do. This, this could be a waiting most decision.
I want to add on to what Sean said. I agree with what Sean said, but I think the option that we need to consider is NADIC. I think we need to, I know that you've already talked to NADIC and you've got some pushback. I think we need to better understand talking to NADIC. And I think that some representative from the town, rather than the developers, should talk to NADIC, see what the options are with NADIC. Because it could also affect the rate. We don't know what the rate is. Paul, you've been on the committee longest, as you indicated. Isn't Sunshine Development, wasn't that one part of Framingham Water?
Yes.
It is part of the land that's in Framingham.
So what was the discussion on both the connection and also the rate that they pay there?
They had a right to connect because they were in Framingham.
Right.
It didn't require an IMA, an intermunicipal agreement, because part of that property is in Framingham.
Oh, with their Sherburne residence, right?
What rate do you, what water rate do you, do they pay you mean?
Correct.
Okay.
They're paying the same water rate as, my understanding is they're paying the same water rate as all other users in Framingham.
Framingham has five tiers, I know. I don't know what the rates are, but they have five tiers of rates.
But Chuck, you make a great point because the NADIC connection is much closer and cleaner. There's.
And less, less risk to the town.
Sean, did you have a comment on that?
Only one other. I mean, we've been talking about this a long time. Winter's coming and I'm not, I'm not going to allow them to do it after either November 1st or 15. So you got to make a decision at some point. Because if you push it off, it's going in next spring. They're not going to be pouring the road while it's going frost.
That's why I think I'm, I'm okay with this. If Sean, Sean's worked with them on this plan, I'm okay with approving this because I think we want to know what's there. We want to move forward with this project based on the town vote, what, almost two years ago at this time.
Which was 87%.
So.
The town vote didn't know any of the details. The town vote was just about.
No, I know. But the, but the point is, Jeff, that if we don't, if we keep delaying this, that opens up the window for more 40Bs.
Well, I comprehend that, but I don't think, I'm not ready to approve this. I can't do that right now.
I like Paul's suggestion, which is that let's get this town council's report. I would approve it.
Approve it pending.
Pending that town council report.
I'd be okay with that.
If the town, if council's report comes back, I agree with Paul. There's no point. There's no point.
I mean, it's a simple answer to a question.
Right.
Whether it can, an IMA can be written in a strict restrictive manner.
Right. So I would be okay with approving it.
Based on special circumstances.
Yeah. Because if the, if the opinion comes back that this has the potential of explosive development there, I would rather do this project through NADIC, through basically the back rather than using.
But I think, I think Paul, we've been told, you're right, Jeff. Somebody from town and maybe David, contact somebody in NADIC. But from what I understand, NADIC doesn't have any interest in providing water or capacity.
We haven't talked to them to develop.
I know. That's why.
So I would, I would like to move that we make the vote subject to those two conditions. Someone from the town talking to people in NADIC and the opinion of town council on the issue of haul rate. So I make that as a motion.
So I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and second. I, I would.
I'm thinking, I'm, I'm just, my question is going to be on the logistics on meeting with the.
I think we need to exhaust that to some degree, at least approach it. The town needs to talk to them, not just the developer. They may be more interested, more amenable to, if the town shows an interest. Right now, it's just a developer.
Well, I mean, we did meet with NADIC two or three times with, I can't name them. John Higley, the water commissioner, Roger Demore.
Several of them.
And we didn't, well, I was there too. And, and there was one select person. But we didn't get very, we didn't get very far because at that time, they were saying that they didn't have the capacity to add anyone. It was with Pulte's discussions with them where they were willing to go further. So we haven't had the discussions after Pulte's received that answer. So.
Well, I made that motion, so I, I sit by it.
So we, we should have the same discussion with NADIC.
I think so. I think to a certain level, we exhaust the options before we make a decision. We're not ready to make this decision, in my view, due to those two things we need to find out first.
Chuck, what are you, I mean, where are you on this?
I think the discussion with NADIC, I think, can be done within the next week or two in terms of Sean's point about November. The town of NADIC should be very concerned about this. The plume from General Chemical is heading towards a couple of their ponds that, that feed the water. I guess I'm a little confused because NADIC is part of MWRA, so this could just be passed through MWRA water. But let's have that discussion.
NADIC water's not.
Yeah, that's.
That's suicide.
That's just a backup, okay? But, and I'm happy to volunteer to go with Dave, to meet with him, because I think it should be done sooner rather than later.
I have, oh, go ahead.
I've talked to a couple of people from NADIC at the General Chemical meetings, and they're less concerned about that plume than Framingham and Sherbin, which I don't fully understand.
Yeah. Marion, did you have something to add?
Uh, yeah, just a couple of comments. My recollection from a couple of years ago now, as David said, that there were feelers to NADIC. My understanding was that there was never a select board to select board level of the meeting that really fleshed out all the possibilities with the NADIC select board. And their board may have changed in the meantime. I think it's worth trying it again at the highest level you can, because I understand there was reluctance on the part of the NADIC town manager and maybe another person, but we never got a clear, from a NADIC book part of you, we never got a clear picture of exactly what those contracts had been and how hard it was.
If that makes sense. Mark, did you have a question?
Just a clarification. So, for sewer, both NADIC and Framingham are MWRA, but the water source, Framingham is MWRA, and the town of NADIC has their own NADIC wells, and that is the difference.
And you have MWRA as a backup.
And, and I think one complication with NADIC, from what I've heard, I think Roger Demore told me this, they have some agreement with Dover about where their lows are. So, you'd almost need approval from Dover as well, in order to draw from their wells, is that true?
You do, they have an agreement.
That's what I thought.
A couple of them are near Elbe.
They're in other towns.
Right.
The rest of my comment was that regarding the legal defensibility of the water line and our ability to limit its use by whatever development might come up along that farmland, I was in on a discussion probably, you know, two or three years ago, with the water commissioner and the water, the town center options committee, regarding the defensibility in general of such water lines. And the lawyer that happened to be consulting at that particular meeting made it clear that it's not, that the defensibility is not absolute, that it's complicated, it depends on precedent, it depends on location and the players. So, unless town council can give you a really watertight opinion, it might be worth even bringing in a second consult, just to make sure that we don't make this decision.
So, that's, I think if we, do we have any other discussion on Jeff's motion? Not, then could you just repeat it? I'm sorry.
Yeah, I just make a motion that we approve their plan, subject to the two conditions, one being that a select board representative, and Chuck would be a perfect one with David, to talk to town of NADIC, to make sure that they understand our interests and communicate the town's interest, in addition to the developer's interest. And Paul's concerned about getting legal opinion on the effects of other 40B developments.
Okay. Then move second to that, right? All those in favor? Thanks for coming, Nicky.
Is there a deadline for to get those two opinions, or to, I mean, I know you have a meeting, I think, in two weeks. Is that something that we should expect by that next week?
We can, we can try. I know Sean did point out that's November 1st, you know, we really wanna get this done as soon as possible. So, David, I think, I'm gonna kinda turn to you on this. How quickly?
Talk to me tomorrow afternoon.
Be happy to. We just wanna keep moving forward.
Yeah, just stay in touch with David. I, I agree with you.
But those are very valid comments, and we, you know...
So, stay in touch with David, and he'll, he'll push this along.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
All right, next, thank you. Our next agenda item is consideration of accepting Department of Conservation and Recreation grant. David Killian, Town Forest Committee.
Yeah, hey, Melinda?
Oh.
Could you go get Eric Johnson?
He's in the kitchen.
Yeah, yeah.
Eric.
Sorry.
Thank you for...
I texted, but the answer's...
We now know who Eric listens to.
Good evening.
It's taken the Town Forest Committee five years to get to this point, to get this grant. We've been talking about it all this time. And as you can see by the paperwork, it's been accepted by the state, the plan that like it. So, we're in the process of getting some bids and engineering to get the project going. And at that point, when we have all these bids, we're gonna have an open meeting for the town to discuss it, see what's going on, and we're hoping you guys will approve the grant.
So, if I could say something here. I think it's right that we manage our forests, and I commend you for getting someone else to pay for it.
Well, it's a, it's a three to one grant. So, the Sherbin is putting up about $6,000. The state's putting up 18.
And the 6,000 manual labor and equipment that the town provides counts, so it doesn't have to be cash.
Right.
So, I thought that would use the...
We'll use some of our town forest money, so, you know...
I thought all that was ingenious. But the point I was trying to make was that I have heard from members of the Conservation Commission that they are concerned about some parts of the plant, particularly the use of herbicides to regulate future growth and the impact that might have on this red maple swamp that's nearby.
I can go a little bit and do it now.
But, no, what I'm trying to say is that I think it's always good to, when the state offers us money, I think, my history's been grab the money and get it run. So, I'm not opposed to taking state money, but I do think that some of the details of the plan needs to be vetted in a way that collaborates with the Conservation Commission. So, it's, it's not like we have one town board versus another town board, that you work collaboratively. So, I wanted to emphasize what you said, which was that after you get the grant, there will be some meetings in which there will be an effort to collaborate. I am concerned about the use of pesticides and what effect that might have, because we have so much issue with general chemical and chemicals that are coming from there. Adding more chemicals may or may not be a good idea, and I just think that's worth having a further discussion with, with the Conservation Commission. In the context of your post-grant acceptance statement, that you're willing to have this open meeting.
Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna have a, you know, a meeting and have, you know, some of the pros. Actually, this Saturday, with the Town Forest Conference, of which we have about 155 participants from around the state coming at the Barber Reservation, the invasive professionals will be there to answer questions, and the forestry group will be there to answer all kinds of questions as we walk through the parcel of land that we get the grant on. So, there will be a lot of information there on Saturday.
Before we take a motion on this grant, do we, do we have some comments? Go ahead. Could you just identify yourself when?
Rick, until 29 Redder Drive, I was pleased to hear you say that it'd be an open forum.
Oh, you have to.
And my only question is whether you could do that sooner rather than later. I think it's great that there's this weekend event, but that's for visitors. The open forum, I would think would be residents.
Well, it's after I get all my paperwork. You know, the professionals will give us the bids, and then we'll have, you know, a timeframe to get started. And that's, you know, when we get all that paperwork for those people, we will have a meeting here.
Yeah, I'm just thinking that...
Same, same as what we had at the conservation, where they use, you know, invasive applications to take care of it.
I'm thinking that the open town forum could provide some input that could change the approach a little bit, that might affect the estimate. So, it just seems out of order to me.
I can't answer that right now. You know, we have, all this, these people are getting, coming back to me with estimates and things like that. So, you know, I don't have all those answers.
So, you can't hold it. It's already out for bid, is how you're telling me?
Right. Yeah, we have, we have, you know, the invasive people, we have the loggers, and we're gonna see what their timeframe is. The state has approved all of this.
I understand.
You know, DCR has approved it. If they didn't approve it, we wouldn't have got the money.
Any estimate of when the meet, the open forum would be?
Uh, not until I get the paperwork back, which is, should be relatively soon, because the Phil Benjamin, the forester, has gone out to all of these people to get back to him.
Sean, do you have something?
I might jump in. I just wanna point out, all of these meetings are open meetings. Every single meeting has been an open public meeting. It's the Town Forest.
I understand that. And about five years ago, Conservation Commission went through the same thing, and went through all the same process, had open meetings as well. But then they did schedule an open town meeting. A lot of people showed up that they hadn't heard from before. There was a lot of, of good questions, a lot of energy. People felt like they were heard, they got answers to their questions, and it was an essential part of the project.
That might have been for regulation change when you have a hearing. You're talking about public...
No, I'm just talking about an open forum where you discuss what's going on and publicize it so people know and can come and find out. That's what they, what Conservation did, and it was very successful. One of the pieces of information, or one of the results in that, was that they ended up saving a stand of tupelo trees, which are really highly appreciated in this area. Without that meeting, they would have been cut down. So, I think it's an essential piece of what we're doing here, to make sure there's a publicized, a public meeting to discuss this. Not a hearing, just a presentation.
So, Dana, you're saying that once you get your bids back, you're gonna go ahead and hold this meeting in public size, is what you think?
It's, it's part of the grant.
Right.
When you get the grant, it says you have to have an open forum.
Okay.
You know, similar to what Conservation did, because they went through the same people.
Yep.
Same forester, same state agency, and we're doing the same thing.
Okay. Carol, do you have?
Yeah, I'm Carol McGarry. I'm on Conservation Commission, and then I'm also on this Land Management Task Force that Rick is a member of.
And I am also.
Yeah, I'm sorry?
I'm on that committee also.
At the Barber, yes. So, one of the issues there is, we did do a logging program there, and it was a great learning experience, because we found out that there was a lot of invasives that came in. And over many years, there's a small group of volunteers that have gone back repeatedly to pull and to, you know, we were doing it without chemicals. So, one thing we learned from that is that invasives, you know, when you do a logging operation, usually the loggers address this, and the plan does address this, but we're concerned, one of the big concerns on Conservation Commission, having had that experience, is that invasive plants will come back in. So, then you have, in this plant that's been proposed, it's gonna be treated chemically, because it's such a big area. The area that was logged in Barber is only maybe a couple acres. So, we're talking about five acres of red pine mature forest that's being clear cut, and it's along the Bay Circuit Trail. So, we know that people walking through there are gonna suddenly be walking through a clear cutted area, and that also part of the proposed plan is pesticide use initially to control large bittersweet plants, but also, I think, you know, the feedback with Conservation Commission, there was three pages of feedback that we gave in May, and did not have any feedback from the Town Forest about it, is that it will require more extensive both pesticides, or could, and management and people management. So, I think the concern that I have about, and this is not Conservation Commission's position stance, let me step back as somebody who is a resident and has been involved with this. My concern about approving the funding now is that then we're committed. You know, then we've taken money from the state for the forestry plan as outlined, at a point when abutters have no idea, people whose groundwater could potentially be contaminated have no idea about it, people who walk through Bay Circuit Trail have no idea about it. To, to my mind, the plan, you know, we have Ted Elman, who was the invasive plant expert at, doing the Wildflower Society, recommended that rather than doing a five acre clear cut, that there should be a more ecological approach of, you know, as individual trees fall down, gradually the forest will regenerate. And, and, you know, this plan is quite extreme. So, I think the lack of public input has been a problem, basically, because, and the lack of coordination and, you know, kind of a response to a three-page memorandum of a full series of concerns that Conservation Commission has had. So, I guess, you know, now it's coming to the select board to make a decision. Should we take this money? And I guess my point is that, once you approve the money, we are committed to clear cutting that five acre forest. I mean, that's what the money's worth.
It's very fair the way she's putting this. This is a five acre area of red pines that were planted in the 50s and 60s to last about 30 years and to be cut down. They don't have their bounty, so there's no young coming out of them. So, all over the state, the same thing's happened. Every one of these places that they have planted these trees, they get bugs, they die, they get all kinds of diseases. Now, in the state of Massachusetts, all over, some of these forests have been closed, no access until they're clear cut. Some of them are owned by DCR, many of them are owned, like Sherbin, by the towns, and they're just, they're closing them down to do something else with them. These trees do not, you know, they're, we're probably at the 50% or higher death rate in this area, and every day, there's more falling. Steve Petty, the new member of our committee, is going through, driving through and cutting things out of the way. So, to say that it's anything close to the Barber Reservation is ridiculous. We're trying to do something else. I've gone through, you know, the state, through DCR, and said, "What is the best thing to do with this?" And he said, "Make sure the invasives are gone as best you can, and come up with a new plan." There are many things you can do with the five acres, and it's up to the Town Forest Committee to maintain this property and to see what's going on.
So, you know, I'd also comment, I, I was on the bike path that goes through Sherbin, through Holliston, and it just happened, that goes past a really lovely piece of conservation land that's managed by trustees of reservation. I just happened to be there this weekend, and they actually posted something saying that they also have a red pine stand, that they considered logging it out, but that the timber was not economically viable, so they canceled that.
Eight years, excuse me, eight years ago, those logs were worth money.
Right.
Now, because of their death, and because of the, so many of them across the state, we can't, we have to pay to get rid of them. So, it's like, what are we gonna do? We're gonna let it fall down on top of the Bay Circuit? Sherbin doesn't have enough money to take care of picking up a tree.
I think, I think, you know, everybody's...
The entire forest isn't gonna fall on the Bay Circuit, you know what I mean?
The discussion is between the two of you right now, and I think, I think Dave came to ask if we would approve the acceptance of this grant. I think we wanna bring the discussion up here. I, I mean, does everybody, where does everybody think, unless based on the discussions that we've had today?
Well, they've convinced me that we need a forum before the bids are finalized. I mean, he's got a process he's going through, but we've already started the forum, the way I look at it. They've convinced me that there's bigger issues to be looked at.
But Paul, I think, if the state's offering the money, did you say, I mean...
Well, I always liked the idea of taking money. We don't ever have...
We don't ever have to use the money. But if you have an opportunity to take state money, you ought to, you know, put it in the bank first, before they change their mind. So that's sort of a gut instinct, working with the state for so many years. They offer you money, you take it while you can. And you can always make changes. And the change that I'm concerned with is the pesticide use and the adding of chemicals to the ground.
One quick thing about that. These are all the chemicals that Audubon uses, trustees of the reservation. These are minimal toxic to animals and people. These are not, this is not Roundup. This is, you know, much, much less potent. And they use it all the time. You know, I checked with all these other groups, and they said, you know, "We use it."
I'm not being critical. What I'm saying is that that information you just said, what the chemicals are, how they're gonna be used, how often they're gonna be used, are there alternatives? Is the discussion that we really need to have with the community, with the abutters, and with people who are concerned environmentalists? And so, to me, the public forum is very important here, that there be this, this give and take, where you provide the information that you have. It's nice to know they're not using Roundup. That's the first time we've heard that. It wasn't in the paperwork, it wasn't said what chemicals we were gonna use. If there are alternatives to using chemicals, like volunteers taking the invasives out by hand, maybe that's something that's worth having a dialogue with the community as a whole. And there are abutters. One thing that's different from, that Sherburne is different from other communities is that we depend on our well water to drink. And if they are our neighbors who have wells, and there are neighbors who have wells, if they have the risk of having some chemicals get into their water supply, it's good for them to know about it before the chemicals go down, and have, give them an opportunity to be heard, and have a chance for them to assess what that's going to mean for them, than to find out five years later that their wells can't be used because there's something in it that exceeds some standard. So all I'm saying is, I'm in favor of taking the state money. I'm in favor of maintaining the forest. I'm in favor of the Town Forest Committee managing this program. I'm saying, please consult. Begging, please consult.
That's part of our program.
Work with the neighbors, work with the concerned environmental people. Give everybody a chance. And if we, if we have to go back to the state saying we want to amend part X of the plan, we go back to the state and we say we want to amend part X of the plan. I don't think that it would object to using less chemicals, for example, if you decide to use less chemicals.
No, they won't. No, I mean--
Okay, I move that we accept the funds, and we support this program, particularly in light of the open forum meeting, which is required, and they take the public input. So I move that we accept the funds.
And do we need the dollar amount, Eric? You know, it's $18,150.
Move to accept the grant of water from the Department of Conservation and Recreation grant for the Community Forest Stewardship and Plantation Grant for the amount of $18,150.
Second. Further discussion? Not all those in favor?
Thanks, gentlemen.
Thanks, David.
Our next identified opponent is, I think a lot of people are here for the consideration for developing a farm pond opening-closure gate policy. I'll start, just because I was at the public safety meeting when this was first discussed a couple of weeks ago. There, just some history that the gate, I think at the end of the season, without any guards, was being closed, and there's never been, from what I've doubted, there's never been a set policy in town--
That's not true.
Well, Paul, can I finish? This is what I've been told, that there wasn't a policy of when the season opened. That's, that's what everybody was saying at this public safety meeting, and this is what I've heard. So I wanted to bring it up, that as a select board, we should set a policy of when the season is and when the gates are open.
Well, if I could.
Yes.
This issue has come up before the Board of Selectmen numerous times over the last 20 years. It's been extensive discussion. And I think it's very clear that the gates have to be open year-round. That's the policy of the Board of Selectmen, and that there is no one in the town, no town department head, no town committee, no staff in the Board of Selectmen's office, who can vary that policy without coming back to the board and asking for a change. And I say that because that policy has come up, because that existing policy of having the gates open year-round has come up, again, in so many different contexts. The one I want to particularly mention is that, if you recall, there was a considerable effort that I was involved with to get the state to convey the pond to the town. And the question from legislators and the governor was, "Is this just making a private pond for property owners around the pond?" And the assurance back was, "This pond belongs to every citizen of this town." And that every citizen of the town would have the same access to this pond as the property owners around the pond. That's been the philosophy of this board for 20 years. So to find out that some gates are being closed sometimes, I don't know where that has come from, but if there's a reason to close the gates, if there are officials or members of the public who feel the gate should be closed, they should come to the Board of Selectmen and ask for it to be closed. But I don't see that we need to go out and reinvent the wheel, have a committee investigate.
I don't think there was any selection of, any ever suggestion of a committee. I think it was that it was so unclear as to who-- I mean, just because, I know you've been on the board a lot longer, so--
Yes. I was gonna say, in the five years I've been here, the only discussion was the Farm Pond Advisory Committee wanted us to close the gate to the boat ramp because of concerns about boats bringing in invasive species, invasive plants. There was no discussion about, that discussion, which I think was about three or four years ago, I don't recall any discussion about the gate policy. So I don't know if there was a policy or philosophy, but I, I think that's the point, is to come up with what the policy is.
Right, we want, I think, we need to reiterate, if the policy's already in place, Paul, I think the point tonight is, let's reiterate that policy so everybody's very clear what the town's policy is on the gates at Farm Pond.
I wouldn't like to ask Paul a question, if that's okay. Because I think we could talk about, it wasn't the ownership of the pond, wasn't the ownership of the water rights? The water rights, who used to go to Medfield State Hospital?
Yes.
Wasn't that like an '08 or something like that? I think it was, the legislature passed that. Was there a commitment, is there anything? That is interesting, that's very interesting that that's there. So there was a commitment to whoever, the executive or the general court, that it remained open at all times, or basically made public accessible?
Not at all times, but that the property owners around the pond would have no greater access to the pond than those, the rest of the citizens of the town, because we, they were giving it to all of us. So that every person in this room is an owner of the pond. And if we're going to exclude everybody from the pond, we, for some safety reason, we exclude the property owners around it, everybody, treat it equal. But if the property owners can come and go to the pond whenever they want, so does all the other owners of the pond.
I'd like to find, as long as I say, it'd be interesting to see some of that, either minutes or whatever, just to kind of see what the commitment was.
That's documented, yeah. I'm just gonna say, I swim almost every night, and I did the perimeter swim last Saturday, so I know that what I've seen in my 25 years here is that all summer, they closed the boat gate, as you recommended, Chuck, because they wash, make you wash boats as you're coming in, the lifeguard gate. Every year I've lived here, what happened in Labor Day, they would then close the main gate and open the boat gate, for whatever reason. Part of the reason, I think, was, and Sean may be able to validate this, they used to put the docks in the parking lot, which they're not there now. They're now on the beach, the new ones are on the beach at the far end of the beach. So in the winter, the main gates were always locked, but the boat gate was always open. So the pond was still always accessible. It did happen, because like I say, I swim every night. It happened, whenever it was, two weeks ago. It was, both gates were closed for, I don't know how long, four or five days or so, before that public safety meeting. So I don't know why that happened, but I do know that in the past, we have changed which gate is open in the off-season versus the regular season.
And I know there's concerns about potential liability for unsupervised swimming.
Yeah.
I'm part owner of a private beach association in South Dartmouth, and we post, and George checked with town council--
Yes, I spoke to our town council. He said that as long as we have a sign up, which we do, that say, "No lifeguard on duty, swim at your own risk," our liability is covered. So that's, I think it's a pretty simple answer, that, I mean, we should have the gates, as Paul said, they should be open and accessible. From, I think it's, I think what we've said now, they get open at 6:00 a.m. every morning, and police go around at night, they try to do it at a certain time unless they're on the call or something, but at night, they will shut the gates.
Yeah, at the safety meeting, I was there as well with George. Adam Page made the great point, which is that the question's gotta be the process, and perhaps the process should be that if our public safety officials are concerned, if anyone's concerned and wants to alter that policy, it needs to come and be vetted at a public meeting and approved by the select board.
Yes.
You know, Farm Pond Advisory Committee's involved primarily with water safety issues, I mean, the quality, water quality issues. So that makes sense to me, as a process of going forward.
And I know a couple of people hit, I'm sorry, you had wanted to make a public comment, and I asked you to wait till now, so I'll let you start if you'd like to say something.
Great.
If you could just identify yourself.
Deborah Kennedy, 17-page farm row. And thank you so much for, and thank you to Chief Thompson for giving access back to us. I am so disturbed that one person in your office has masterminded the closing and keeping away of Farm Pond, which is like the best resource in all of Sherburne. I moved here because of it, way before I needed schools or anything else. And connecting the dots, we were told that the police refused to close the gates. Then the Chief Kinney was encouraged, coerced, through drownings and other people's tragedies, to agree that the pond would be closed unless there were lifeguards, which has never been the case. And, you know, how do you dispute being made to feel guilty and responsible for possible drownings? And then the person, even though manipulated that all, then blamed, blamed these town officials. Somebody has changed the website from it being complete access all year to, other than the summer season, being from only 6:00 a.m. to 9:00 a.m., April 1st to November 1st. That on the website has been changed by somebody. And I just am very, very horrified that someone in your office has this power to single-handedly mastermind the closing of Farm Pond, when you think it was closed a week before the end of August. That has been, you know, historically incredibly unusual. And thanks to Chief Thompson, countless people have had such enjoyment of that pond this month, and will continue to be able to do it. We were told, in a very condescending way, if, you know, of course, safety with the drowning was the main reason, yet we were told if we wanted to access the pond, we could walk or bike to the pond, which personally would be much more dangerous to me, biking or walking along Route 16 and 27 to the pond, so. And then all of these things have been said in the most unpleasant, condescending way, that you feel you're truly an irritant to the selectmen office to go in and question anything about Farm Pond. Thank you.
Laura, did you have a comment?
I was just going to read a short--
Could you stand up and identify yourself?
I was just gonna read a short letter from the Sherburne Forest and Trail Association to weigh in on this, if that's okay? I'm Laura Van Blarcom, and I'm the president of the Sherburne Forest and Trail Association. At our recent meeting, it was discussed that Pat Cassell's farm-- sorry, I will start from the beginning. Dear Select Board members, At a recent meeting, the Sherburne Forest and Trail Association discussed Pat Cassell's Farm Pond Overlook Project. We strongly support this project. Also discussed was the matter of Farm Pond access and parking, and the disappointing determination that the pond is no longer open before or after the summer swimming season. We feel this restriction, restricted access deprives Sherburne of one of the treasures which led many of us to settle here to enjoy. We also feel that it is very contradictory to create the all-inclusive access which Pat Cassell's project promotes, when the pond itself is open to no one for most of the year. The Sherburne Forest and Trail Directors support year-round access to Farm Pond. Barring that, we unanimously favor that the pond is accessible with the main gates open for parking, at minimum from April 1st through November 30th, from dawn to dusk. Farm Pond is an amazingly beautiful asset to the town of Sherburne. We would like people to enjoy this resource for as much of the year as possible. Thank you.
Paul, I'm just gonna, I wanna go back to you. I guess, if we already have a policy in place, do we need to take any action tonight? I guess what--
The answer is no. But if I could--
Can we find a copy of the policy, though?
I'd like to see it.
Pardon?
I'd like to see anything, I'd like to see it, just kind of know, you know, what we committed to.
Certainly don't recall one in the last five years, so if there was a formal policy, how do you like to see it, and either update it or--
We can vote a new one, and--
Probably cleaner just to vote for a new policy, which is what we discussed earlier of having--
Are you okay with that, Paul, or is that--
If I could just say a few things. One is, this isn't just about swimming. People ice skate in the wintertime. I ice skated on the pond in the wintertime. Other people should be able to ice skate on the pond in the wintertime. And I know, when I ice skated, it was at my risk. I know the pond is deep, I know if it's too warm, it's at my risk. I know if I go swimming there and there's no lifeguards, it's at my risk. That's choices that people made, and have been making successfully for decades and decades and decades. And to my knowledge, no one has died at Farm Pond after hours or after the season. I don't see that that's a real risk, but if our public safety officials believe that that's a real risk, I'm certainly open to them coming forward and presenting the evidence, and presenting the concern, so that we can address it. If there are ways to address it, we should address it, and we should give an opportunity for that to be heard. But absent that kind of presentation, there's been such a history of use in this town, such a tradition, and with specifically the pond, the waters of the pond belonging to everybody equally. It just, just seems very wrong to me for events to take place without the Board of Selectmen voting something different. The legislation does empower the Board of Selectmen to manage the pond. And if there's a reason, if there's a health reason, if there's some kind of emergency, of course, we're gonna act to protect people. I don't think that that should be done without the Board of Selectmen. So do we need another vote? Having sat through so many meetings on this, as the-- Having sat through so many meetings on this, as the wonder servant of Selectmen, to me, it's not necessary to do it, but given the fact that some people appear to be confused, some, I know that the statement that was read mentioned a lot of people. Everybody was acting in good faith. Everybody was trying to do the right thing. Everybody was trying to protect the public. Everybody might see things differently. So it, it does make sense to have the, a document that reiterates in a place that can be pasted on the wall, and on the entrance to Farm Pond and everything else, so that everybody knows there's no confusion, and there's no, no doubt about it. My concern about the board revoting is, is I don't want the board to now decide, "Well, let's, let's close it in the wintertime, because ice skating is not safe for us to do something else." Well, that's the problem when you bring something back.
Stick it up. Let's find it. Bring it before the board next to me and decide, "I'd like to see it."
I think it's more a matter of publicizing. It sounds like it should be on the website. In other words, find the policy that you approved, and if you just get the word out there. It sounds like there's actually conflicting evidence that the hours are currently posted. I don't know where that was quoted from, but the hours are posted as different than that.
Right. David, can we find where we've, where they voted in the past, and see what the policy was?
Couldn't find anything. I don't think I-
I couldn't find anything. I was back in my minutes in 2002.
I can say, seven years I've been here, I've probably closed the gates five or six times, mostly for health issues, when a reading comes up bad and we have to close it. Or somebody comes out of the water sick, and we don't know why, we close it. Or if there's a peak time, and for some reason, we have a staffing issue, we have closed that before, too. Because it's during a time that people are expecting that the whole place is open.
You got to speak into my-
So, we need a policy.
Okay.
But that policy's got to still be flexible. I mean, you hired me to run the day-to-day operations of the town, and there are times that we've had to close them.
Emergency conditions always, you know, but like you said, you've been here seven years, you close it five times. That's not the end of the world. You know, at a minimum, and you know, to what Paul said, too, you know, someone in the office probably made a mistake, but at minimum, we got to see, you know, how much love there is for the pond.
So I think what we need to do then, I think, a policy takes more than just voting on it tonight. I think we need to, David, if you could propose one to us for our next meeting, and I think, in general, and we'll have a little more discussion here tonight on it, but that we want to keep the pond open year-round, from dawn till dusk, and with the exception of an emergency situation, I think.
Yeah, so water quality issues, obviously.
Is everyone kind of on board with that?
Yeah, I think that's, I think that's the, we don't have words, the specific language for the policy, but that's a clear policy that I've heard all five members articulate here.
And I think one other thing, just to discuss on this note, because the gate will be being opened and closed every day, I know I was talking, I forget your name, I'm sorry.
I'm Doug. Doug McDougal.
Doug McDougal, sorry. Who, he's, the gate that's there is in poor condition, and it needs, I think we need to look at replacing that gate, so it's easier for the police to close it at night, open and close it. And I think, as Doug said to me before the meeting, it's too close to the road as well. Like, it should be in an area where people can pull off the road when they go to close it. So, if we could look into that as well, along with this-
We also close where the swim meets.
For the, what's that?
We also close where the swim meets.
Well, the pond's not closed, John.
The pond's not closed, but we usually are overwhelmed with parking, so-
Oh, yeah, there's no parking. Trust me, hey? So, so yeah, we could write up that policy for the next meeting, and then we can vote on it. I think, I think that's what we want to do.
I guess, if you look back in minutes, maybe try looking at ones relative to the acceptance of the water rights from Medford State. I think it was like 08, '09, something like that.
Chief Kenny? Sorry, he is.
Just one, one thing that I discussed with Carson, if it'd be possible, I know there's a phone line down there, if we could get a one-way phone that goes to dispatch, so if there is an emergency, you know, you don't have to depend on a cellphone. If somebody's in the water, getting out of the water has an emergency, they can just pick it up, hit dispatch, and we'll be able to, you know-
That's good, just off our services and always-
Yeah. It's terrible.
Great idea.
Yeah.
Great idea.
We proved the tower there.
Well, I was gonna say, it's better, it's better now than it was 20 years ago.
Alicia, did you want to make a comment?
Yeah, just on the question of the rights and the history of the rights, Alicia Goodie ate Zion's Lane. It's always dangerous to Google, but I did. I found that in 1647, the Great General Court of Massachusetts declared that Farm Pond was a great pond, and that all settlers had the right to fish in it. And then further back, I think it was, I could send this to you guys, but in 1935, the Commonwealth was authorized, authorized the Sherburne Forest Selectmen to administer Farm Pond and to establish rules and regulations. And in 2010, an act of the legislature transferred the Farm Pond water rights back to the town of Sherburne.
That may be the timeframe to look.
I think Paul was on the 2010 and not 1935.
I think he was on that 1647. Oh, it's the WKA bathhouse, right?
Michael.
Michael Wester, 54 Forest Street. In terms of process, if you're going to do a new written policy, given the issues of communication that you put, that you clearly posted on the front page of the, of the town website, so people can see it and comment on it, and you might not do it at the next meeting, so that people have time to, because by the time you get it together, put it out there, it's going to be one of these things where you get things days before you need it.
Right.
It doesn't work well.
So maybe it's in two-
And so there's no urgency here, since we're all in agreement that we just want it open all-
Right, right.
I think that if you just make sure it's on the front page of the website, because a lot of stuff, all things are done that way, and everybody here knows that it's going to be there, and then you could do it in two meetings from there or something, that you just give a couple of weeks of each a comment.
That makes-
Because we always have columns amongst process of getting informed and having positive comments.
I appreciate that. Thank you, Michael. So that probably makes sense to write it up and then have, have it available to the public. Alexis.
Alexis Mabson, 21 Snow Street. Tell me if this is off the subject of digressing, but I didn't believe that the gates were ever open during the winter at Farm Pond, but maybe I haven't been here long enough.
There are no.
Unless I have. So, my question is, now that we know that they are open, that would bring more people to the pond, probably to stay, skate, or enjoy the ice. So I just wonder, by bringing more people, will then safety become an issue? And I only bring this up because, thanks to the fire department, who flooded the tennis courts for two years, once successfully, once the heat was unsuccessful, would there be the opportunity to maybe use one of the ponds that abuts the Sherburne Playground as a place that there was monitored safe skating, like Channing Pond in Dover?
I think it's more of a recreation-
Is that a recreation thing? Okay.
I would assume you'd want to talk to them.
I think that land is conservation.
Is that land conserva-, okay. So I guess you'll have to talk to Michael Wester.
If you want to go over.
A few others.
Thank you.
Right, yeah, and I think, and as Jeff said, I think the winters are a lot warmer, so I feel like the-
So we'll be-
Good luck freezing.
-havering.
Yeah, good luck.
Thank you.
But yeah, so, do we have, do we have any other?
Yeah, Calum on the board, please. Would you please include something about when the gate's open for boats, so that they don't think it's open all the time? So the boat ramp cannot be open constantly without one in drive. Waterline is, there's no guard, there's no boat in the water.
That's very important, because to keep the invasive species out. I know that's been talked about numerous times, so we want to make sure. I think that should be in the Farm Pond.
I thought it was to keep me and my dogs off the boat ramp late at night, which is where we swim.
I mean, that gate keeps certain boats, I mean, by having that, it's a false safety. It keeps certain boats out, but it doesn't keep somebody from-
Right. Oh, absolutely. But at least it, it's- Some barrier.
Yeah, and without the gate also, in those 18, I don't even want to go into this, but in the, those 1800s or something, something about, anyone can go to the pond, regardless of town residents or not. You pay 50 cents.
Well, that's going to make that.
You had your hand up, so-
Yeah, sorry. Aunt Jagan, what am I, here's my, my grandmother was a debit and lived right near the pond, and she had all those guys, they had stories of someone drowning, someone tipping over this boat. There's always a story about the bad stuff. And there's also so many, many stories in the family of skating on that. I can think of all of us. So the nine of us, all my cousins, just going around that place having a blast, and it should continue. I have to say, one night I was with someone, and I was on the far side, over on the Dover side, and we were flying along on black ice, and we ran into some water. And it was just on the top, but it's getting shit out of us. And, and it was a beautiful night for skating, and people should still have that there in their lives, in the fun. And I hope it's open again. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Nancy, I think you had your hand up.
Well, I just wanted to say, I grew up on property that surrounded little Farm Pond, and that was made a great pond by accident by Mr. Channing, who owned all of that. And the state said, "Thank you very much, it's now a great pond, you must provide access." So I think there is a law on the boats, and I don't know whether that, that Farm Pond falls under that law, that there must be access for the public. People can walk through Mr. Channing's property down to that, that pond, and put a boat into fish, or to walk around and fish. And I grew up watching that happen, because they were sued by the, leaning him in fur and feather, whatever, and won their case, because a great pond is supposed to have public access.
It's 50 cents.
So anyone can go in, even if they're not residents, but they just can't park. You can rush over and park.
Thank you. Do we, I think we're kind of know what we're going to do here, so thank you, everyone that came for this issue and the feedback we got. We're going to move on to our next agenda.
Thank you.
So, next, Sharon, if you want to give it a- And if we want to take like a minute break, just while everybody, I don't know if anybody needs a-
Sure, I don't have a break. If you want to have one, it's fine.
If we can, if we can move any discussions into the hallway, we're trying to, we have more of our meeting to do. Go ahead, Sharon.
Okay, this is just really a follow-up, the paperwork for a reserve fund transfer that was actually presented to the Select Board back in May by Gito, on behalf of the planning board. So this is, the paperwork, as you all have, is for $10,000 for the purpose of hiring a consultant to conduct soil testing at Jameson Field in order to determine its suitability as a leaching area for-
Could you close the back door?
Arthur's, Arthur's working on it, just making sure nobody-
Okay, thanks. Thanks.
For potential wastewater treatment. So, the planning board was tasked with overseeing this study, and they have a copy of the proposal in your, in your packet. So, this was already discussed, it's just the formality of submitting the paperwork and getting, getting it signed off for a reserve fund transfer, which I have right here.
Okay. Do we have any discussion?
Well, I had a discussion. I had voted against the testing of the fields, and so I'm going to vote not to fund the testing of the fields. That was because the preservation of Jameson Field as an asset for recreation purposes to me is a primary goal for myself as a selectman, and I think for the, should be for the board as a whole. And to use that field for the disposal of commercial and residential waste, and restaurant waste, and all the rest, seems to be incompatible with proper stewardship of the land. So for the same reasons why I was opposed to the testing, I'm also going to vote no on the funding.
Do we have a motion to do the funding for what we did vote to do the testing of?
So move.
Do I second?
I would against it, too.
I'll second it, then. Do we have more discussion on it? Because, like I said, this was what we-
No, I'm so, I, 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 I think I'll vote in favor, but I wouldn't even vote the last time I was on the Select Board yet, so I have it out, out here. But one thing I want to point out, separate to this discussion, which is the reserve fund is very, very tight this year, so as we go forward, and I don't know if you know what the balance is, Sharon, it's probably around 260,000.
I knew you were going to ask me. The balance after this is 265,200.
So, so we just have to be aware of that. I didn't mean to distract, but that's, it's really, really tight.
Yep, understood. I think this was one-
It was deliberate, it's how we got the tax rate down, we didn't use all the-
Right. How many signatures it needs? I also voted against the testing.
I think this is, we did, the board-
I respect the vote.
As a majority voted to-
I respect the vote.
So, now we have to fund something we voted for, so. If we have any other, no discussion, I'll take a vote, all those in favor?
Oppose.
Three to one.
Stand.
Thank you. The next item is town administrator report on sustainability coordinator.
Right. Before I go into the sustainability coordinator issue, I just would like to add something into the report, because it's late, I just wanted to say something else about the people in the room here.
Okay.
Could you speak up a little?
Then nobody can hear you, David.
I can see rescue and fire department people here, and I just want them to know that there's nothing on the open session agenda to speak on, but if the board wanted to allow them to elaborate or explain why they're here, you can do this under the town administrator report.
Okay. Yeah, and I'm okay, I was going to actually give you a chance to say something if you'd like. We did get a letter earlier today from the fire department, and a few members have sent me individual notes as well, but if any of you would like to-
And I've gotten three phone calls from people.
So if anybody from the fire department had any comment, or anything?
We should finish, we haven't voted on a reserve fund transfer.
We did.
Okay.
I think that just, I'm Dan Wolf, I live on Two Lakes Street. I just think that we're here just in support of Chief Kenny, and I think that we all are here because we think he does a really good job, and he's really brought another level of commitment and a level of expertise to the park that we have.
I know the letter wasn't individually signed, but does it more or less represent both you guys here?
It was your individually.
We came here individually. We weren't asked by Chief Kenny, and wanted to just say that since he has joined our town's administration, that the quality of service as a towns person, I live on Prospect Street, my name's Colleen Neidra, I see it from the outside in. There's more exposure, there's more communication with the town, there are events that bring awareness about safety issues, there's been more townspeople volunteering to be on the fire and rescue, and I think the chief has done an outstanding job of building bridges, both with administration and other town officials, and attracting better caliber of fire and rescue personnel, since I joined as a volunteer a year ago. And I think it would behoove the town and the townspeople to keep him within our community, because he's doing an outstanding job.
I, I don't know who drafted this letter, but this is one of the best letters I've seen in three or four years, so-
Can we clarify that, if you guys are tied to this letter or not?
Can I remember this one?
Okay. They may not have even seen that letter.
This is, it's specific, it's substantive, and it, the tone is just terrific, so I'd like to know who wrote it, so that I can ask them to write stuff for me.
So honestly, I did not know a letter was written, and the nice thing is, truly, we are, you know, a bunch of individuals who all share the same passion, that we think that the chief's doing a great job, and I'm glad that you're hearing about it in a variety of ways.
It's, it really is a nice piece of work.
If I could make a comment, that I was on the board that hired Chief Kenny. I was proud to vote for him to be a fire chief. I am delighted with what he's done in the town, and I certainly will do everything I can to try and keep him in the town, so-
But were you on the search committee?
I think you were.
Oh, that's right. I was on the search committee. I just thought I'd clarify that. I just thought I'd clarify that.
Can I, I'm confused, I don't know
Oh, sorry, let me clarify, yes, there's a, there's a personnel issue with the fire chief's contract on our executive session, so it won't be an open session. And so they really didn't have a chance to address it when it's on our agenda, so they're taking a chance to address it now.
There was a newspaper article that said that he was appointed the fire chief in Norfolk. And we're trying to address the issue of that appointment.
We wanted to give the 15 to 20 people that are here for that purpose a chance to speak.
Arthur?
Yes, so I'm Arthur, I'm a resident, I live 58 Farm Road. I share all the comments that made before. I did read that letter, I didn't write it, although I do respect the person who did. And I fully share those comments, I support the chief, anything we can do to retain him. The only thing I would add is that one of my former hats was being with you on the selection committee. And as you remember, we were very fortunate to have him as a candidate. I think he was head and shoulders, our top choice. As it says in that letter, that's, that's, it's a very rare thing. And I think it would be, it would be in the town's best interest to do what we could to keep him. Because we're gonna get another chief candidate.
Thank you.
Yeah, go ahead.
Hi, my name's Joe Cummings, I'm not a resident of Sherburne, I live right over line in Millis. I'm a lieutenant on the fire department, I've been on for about 10 years now. And since Chief Kenny has come aboard, the morale, he's just been great. We'd like to retain him, just the, the quality department has improved, the morale has improved, equipment, training, everything, so. Like to see whatever the town can do to keep him in the town's best interest and fire department's best interest. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, begin.
All right. Go ahead. Thank you for your, thanks for coming in, guys.
Thank you.
So the, the position that we're talking about under the town administrator report is the sustainability coordinator. I was asked to come back with the modified job description of the town planner. So that's what's in your packet. I also had some communications with Frank Cummings. That's your last name, right? I don't know.
First Cummings.
Yeah, first. And they, there's some opposition to the, this process of changing the job description, but I had, I had amended that as requested by the board. So you may want to recognize them to speak on
I think, one, one question I have before, before I open up for you guys to have a chance to talk. My question is, is in the revised job description of the town planner, like we talked about in our last meeting, does that include all the item, all the bullet point items that were in the motion that was made at town meeting, that was approved at town meeting? There was a number of descriptive items that were, that was in the warrant article.
It doesn't include everything, but I can't tell you what it doesn't include.
Okay. I think, I think based on the vote of the town, I mean, we need to, if we can, like we talked about last time, I'm, I'm okay with this incorporating it in, but I think we do need to make sure we include what was voted on.
So I agree with that we should include everything the town's voted on, but I don't think the town voted the notion that the existing town planner and the existing structure that we have for various projects in town would be the sustainable coordinator. My, my impression of the vote at town meeting was that we were gonna hire sort of a bright new face who's committed to serving the community and the government to, to energize us, pardon the pun, or reduce our energy, but to focus on improving the environment. And by folding this into the current town planner's responsibility doesn't seem to me to be what the town meeting really voted. So if we're looking at what town meeting voted, there was nothing in that vote about
I think it was pretty general though, because we reviewed this many times advisory even before that. I, I think you'll find that maybe some of the slides had more specifics, but I'm pretty sure the motion was pretty general. It didn't, I think you're right, it didn't say it was gonna be, you know, another town employee, but it didn't say it wasn't. I also, I think it, the language was, you can give that in a minute, the language was pretty general as I recall in the motion that was voted on. So I don't know that it precludes that.
I remember very specifically, actually, our discussion about the language of the warrant article and everything, things came up about benefits. We actually made a conscious decision, part of this board, to actually move any commitment to benefits and that. I know, I think some of the pushback talks about, you know, it must be 20 hours, it's oddly specific, but none of that. In fact, if it ever was in, it was actually moved by this board in the warrant article because we did not want to commit to that at that point. It was considerable discussion on this board. So it's purposely open-ended. And it's certainly, not, not to me, but it allows us to go advertise, hire someone, it allows us to even do something internal or anything else like that.
I think the, the restriction is the money.
Right. And, and in the initial discussions that we had with, with you, Fred and Debbie and Joan, the presentation was all about the return on the investment with grant writing. And we specifically did have a conversation about the first year, let's try it out with somebody that's non-benefited. We, we did. Because I think that was very important to us on the costs.
The other issue that we raised was making sure that the sustainability coordinator position included availability to help with other grant writing to the extent of the time available. We talked about that at some length.
Yes, we did.
So that, that's where the tie with the earmark, what I had requested for an earmark was 80 grand for Sherburne, a position in Sherburne. And that was not put in there because of the amount of
I don't understand that. I can't hear anything.
You guys need the microphone.
There was
Can you bring some money up to your face, up to your mouth?
There's an earmark that was requested from the legislature for $80,000 to fund a sustainability coordinator position. That was after town meeting. And then
And that was a shared position with the town of Holliston?
No.
No. No. The request was not for a shared position.
$80,000 for a position in Sherburne. After the legislature voted, we were informed that the 80,000 did not go in there, that it was $50,000 and it was shared with Holliston.
Because you didn't get Dykemist support, wasn't that it? Didn't politically have to get Representative Dykemist's support to represent Holliston?
Yes. It came before, I brought that issue before the board and we did vote to support the 50,000.
Right.
And it was, it was to be based in Sherburne, but they were also to serve the town of Holliston. And there was a five to zero vote to support the 50,000.
Right. So you can't reluctantly, because all along I've said, and I've been very clear, I think we need to do what's best for the town of Sherburne first. If that, if it means we can share somebody with Holliston and it works out great, but we have to put ourselves the priority in what we want in Sherburne, number one. And, so I don't know where it came, like, we never voted on the 80,000 though. That was just, I think, was that just something you requested?
That's they call from the floor and say, do you have any earmarks?
Oh, okay.
That you like. And then I give them
Because the first time I need talked about it as a board was the 50,000 shared, which I didn't like the idea of the shared, but that was, if that's all we could get, that's why we voted for it, I think, right?
So the wording is, I mean, we've seen the wording in the packet. If we don't, if we don't do something with the money, then Holliston gets nothing.
Gets nothing. So there, it is dependent on
It is dependent on.
So, all right, I'm gonna have, I'm gonna let you get, Fred, if you want to come up to the microphone, it might be easier to, or you can talk from your cover.
I think actually I'm gonna start.
Okay.
And I should, while they're coming up, I should say, if, if the intent early on in the town meeting process was 19 and a half hours, the, I think we've calculated that that would be about 38 or 40,000 dollars to fund a position like that.
Right.
So you take the 38 or 40 to fund what they want in Sherburne, and 12,000's left for Holliston, the community that's three times our size.
Right.
So, but it's not based on population.
It's not. But you have to get a signature on an IMA with them.
I understand, but the, I'm not having a problem with the IMA that you put there. But many of these programs are not limited by geographic area. In other words, if you have a, a good idea, let's say electrical aggregation, do electrical aggregation for 4,000 people as opposed to including other communities, it makes much more sense to do other communities. So the same work that's being done for one community can be done in a way that benefits multiple communities. So it's not either or. It's not like Holliston is getting shortchanged because Sherburne comes up with an idea that's gonna benefit 20,000 people and not just 4,000 people. The whole idea, and to get it passed through the legislature, the idea there was some, a regional element to it, and then we're able to pick up loads from legislators other than just our legislators.
If I may?
Yes, please.
The conversation about 50,000, $80,000 Holliston, not Holliston, to your point, George, that's not the conversation we should be having. The conversation we should be having is, what does Sherburne need? What does that job look like? And then how do we fulfill it? So the, the select board, and for really good reasons, I don't want to throw away 25,000, which is half of it, which is our half, but it doesn't make sense to spend three months talking about that and not moving forward with the very position that that was voted on. So we have a different proposal than to get wrapped around the axle on 50,000 or whether we add 12 hours to the town planner who may be the perfect person to do it. It, it needs to be looked at from a different perspective. I think we've been talking about this for months, an entirely the wrong focus. Not, not a bad focus, just not the focus that's needed. So we do have a statement tonight that, that we'd like to make, and, and then we can discuss that.
Joanne Cunningham, Everett Street. First of all, I apologize for reading this, but because I'm speaking as a representative of the article's sponsors, as well as for myself, I wanted to be clear and concise in my comments. So I'm here to express my personal disappointment and frustration with the manner in which this new position has been handled. In the select board meetings that I've either attended or watched on YouTube, there has been more focus on the allocation of the money from the state and the issues around Holliston and Sherburne sharing the position than on the creation of the position itself. You requested that our citizens group draft a job description for the sustainability coordinator position. And our group, the Upper Charles Climate Action, collected samples from 10 other nearby towns where they had sustainability coordinators, assembled them into a preliminary job description, and then submitted it in May to the select board. Four months later, there's still no progress on it. No progress on finalizing and posting a job description that actually fulfills the intent of the citizens' vote. As I listened to the last select board's meeting, it seemed like our draft job description had not actually even been studied, but rather a quicker fix had been sought. And this is why tonight we're making a clear and strong request that this board take action to implement the position as intended. As the sponsors of the article, we request that this board instruct town officials to, number one, complete a job description which is aligned with best practices that fulfills the full intent of the citizens' vote. Number two, post that position. And number three, interview a range of candidates for that job position. We believe it's reasonable that these two, first two actions could be completed within 30 days.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alicia, did you wanna?
Um, yeah.
If you could just, since I know you have it there, I'd really appreciate you just kind of
Yeah, I have not, Alicia Goodie, Science Lane, I have not seen the job description that you have before you, so I, I don't know what's included. But, and Eric is right, in the, the job description, the, the position that was voted on at town meeting does contain specifics. In terms of compensation and benefits, that article provides that the compensation will be set in a manner consistent with the personnel bylaw by the select board. So that's as far as it goes in terms of, but there are specific duties that I'm not sure are consistent with what's in the job description in your packet. Clearly sets out that the individual will report to the town administrator and coordinate with the town planner and director of, now the DVW. The person will develop and submit the Green Communities Grant and search out other grants and develop applications for energy conservation measures. Will research develop and implement proposals for municipal and residential energy cost savings initiatives? And this is important, Paul mentioned municipal aggregation, I mean, that's a huge potential for cost savings. And it can be done, and it has been done, in other communities where the sustainability coordinator works for one town, but the other town feeds in and joins that group. Or the sustainability coordinator is part-time in one town and part-time in the other town. It's not rocket science, there's shared agreements. I mean, I don't know what our current planner's arrangement is between us and Dover and others, how that is set up. But these arrangements are in place all over the state. So it can be done, and I, I don't think it takes three months to do it, but whatever, well. And there are other specifics. One of the important things that we had in mind was outreach to the community, not just municipal savings, but also residential, commercial, whatever, and an educational component for residents. So our vision was much broader, I think, and what was voted on, if I could, by the, by the citizens, was much broader than what I think is in that job description, but I'm speaking without, not inconceivable.
Every point that you just mentioned is in here, except the educational component, I don't, I can't spot that right off the bat.
There's language about developing and implementing outreach and communication strategies.
And tracking progress and achieving goals, setting goals.
Right.
Yeah, that's, that language is in here.
I just don't remember seeing the word educate.
I see education piece, I don't see
No, 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 I mean in this job
We're talking about the job description. If, if I may, there are two job descriptions I think that are in front of you. One for the town planner and one that was submitted by
One of your, right, this was our
Upper Charles Climate Action had four areas of concern. One was definitely communication and another was definitely outreach. But there were two others, funding and reporting. And in the town administrator's amended job description, they only mention for residential and commercial is outreach and communication. And that is not what was voted on. We need funding for commercial and residential types of programs. We need a coordinator who's not just focused on municipal. And frankly, my reading of the updated town, town planner's job description falls way short of that. It just mentions outreach and communication for commercial and residential. It does not talk about focusing on getting grants for things that the residents could use. It does not talk about going for incentives for residential energy reduction and greenhouse gas reduction. It is way short. So our contention is, you need a job description for the job, and then you go out and find the person who fulfills it. And if our town planner is the right person for that, that's great because it's simple and it doesn't make a huge long process once we understand what's needed, what our priorities are, and who can fulfill it. But we don't know that. And I'm not saying that our town planner can't do it. I honestly believe he could. But there are multiple problems with that. One is, we're talking about adding 12 hours to him, giving three to Holliston, leaving us with nine, not 19. So someone's worked a half, a quarter of a position rather than a part-time position, a half-time position, to get this accomplished. We don't have, you know, I'm not gonna go into the whole science of it, but in 2030, if we haven't really addressed this, we're in trouble. And we have only addressed about 50% of the reduction we need by 2030, and that's 10 and a half years away. We need somebody dedicated, and I'm not saying our town planner can't do this, I'm just saying, we need to look at, what's the right job? What are our priorities within that job? And I've hired people for 40 years, and no one's stepping into the position, have I ever said, you have to do this I ever said, you have to do this entire job description tomorrow. Let's set priorities. So, maybe in the first year, it's mostly about grants from municipal, and that's fine.
And that's what we discussed initially, your very first presentation.
Right, but it's not about that.
But that was your very first...
Yes, it is, it's one of the critical things. But think about this too, they bring in grants for something to do with residential, and there's an administrative action in there, that administrative, say ten percent of it is administrative, that goes to the coordinator. So, they're actually paying for themselves while making money for the town. And we just think that we have been way too focused in the wrong area. We need to do three simple things. Get a job description we agree on, that the citizens, the towns, and, you know, the energy committee agree on, and say, yeah, that's what we want from now going forward. And this is not a half-year position or a one-year position. Hopefully, this will be a multi-year position, because it will bring into the town what we expect. And if it doesn't, there's language right at the top of our job description that says, if you don't fulfill it, we're not going to continue to fund it. So, there's not a lot of, it's line three or four, the job description we gave. And that, thankfully, David helped me put that language together, so that it makes sense that the town could actually say, sorry, you haven't, you haven't brought any money in. We don't believe that's going to happen, but if it did, fine, we've got a backup. But let's be real, this is a job that needs to be defined. And once it's defined, it can be prioritized, and it can be posted, and we can get candidates, and the best candidate should be the candidate that we accept. And it's a part-time position now. I hope we can work out something awesome. I hope we can get fifty thousand dollars, because that would be great. We'd get twenty-five of that too for ourselves. But if we can't, we've already wasted four, three, four months of not taking action on this.
I don't think, I think it's not fair to say we've wasted, because we've talked about it at our meetings almost every time.
We've talked about it, we haven't taken action.
And we've worked on, we've looked at your job description, we didn't think that, we thought that was, I think...
Restrictive.
It was restrictive, very restrictive to not working with other departments in the town, which is something we've talked about when we had the discussions.
And reread the article and reread job description that's in there.
Right, right, so, so I think, there's been discussions, not like we've just been sitting on it for three months.
No, I apologize.
And I think, I don't want that, yeah, I don't want that to be the thought that we're just, I mean, we've been working on it. And one of the solutions, one of the solutions that David tangled with was to incorporate it into this town planner, and that could be an efficient way to get somebody working on this sooner rather than later.
I agree. I'd rather spend three months getting the right person in the position, even if it's our town planner, based on a job description that is clear, than to simply move forward because it's easier to add twelve hours to it.
I don't think it's just that it's easier, it's also, easier and efficient are different things.
It's more efficient.
And I think, as we talked about, I don't know if you were here in the very beginning of the meeting, but because we're very efficient in the town, our tax rates went down this year. So, I think we've got to keep that kind of thing in the back of our mind, and that's why we have focused on the money piece of this, it's important. So, so we, I mean, we have to focus on that at the same time.
Do I just, oh, one quick thing that I think has been said in all discussions of this, how this whole thing happened, that we got hooked up with Holliston, might be sort of wondering that. In fact, we've covered what's happening with Holliston tonight. When our group sat down two years ago and was beginning to do our research, we were trying to think of, okay, what can we do locally? Well, we could have a ban on plastic bags, we could try to ban straws, you know, we could do this, we could do that. And then we realized, you know what, it's just a drop in the bucket, these are just Band-Aids on a bigger problem. So, we decided that we wanted to look to other towns, and to see which towns were being successful in reducing their carbon footprint, because that's what it's all about. It turned out that, and I think this was part of the Mass Insights data, that Sherburne's carbon footprint hasn't been reduced since 2012, so we've lost ground there. When we were looking at what other towns were doing well, we realized that every single one of them had a sustainability coordinator, and some of them were sharing a coordinator. And we started thinking about Sherburne and Holliston, we said, you know, we've got two small towns here. Sherburne is a small town, it's got a tight budget, we're not going to be able to afford a sustainability coordinator. What if we would have split one with another town? And that's how the whole idea of sharing a position came to be. I don't think it's going to fly, and therefore, we'll lose the money. For us to hire someone just in Sherburne and expect that Holliston will buy onto that too, and take whatever hours we give them, it's not going to work. This was envisioned as a fifty-fifty split, and it was also envisioned as a sustainability coordinator who could work both individually with our two towns, but collectively with them, applying for bigger grants, because we have a larger population with two towns together.
David, you want to...
I forgot what I was going to say. Couldn't have been that important.
I was before David, or whatever. So, under the current thing, before this, these concerns got raised, you know, plan was to add on to Gino's responsibilities. Would that require any advertisements, or putting this job out there, or allowing other applicants to it, or was it something that could be done automatically? Do you know what I mean?
The posting?
Yeah, like, you know, so we're expanding, you know, taking from twenty-two to thirty-five hours, whatever it is. Would that, the process of that, would it have to be posted and allow other applicants? Or is it something that...
No, no, and the reason is, it's not altering the existing position enough to trigger a new hiring. And that was from discussions with town council.
Okay, okay.
If you broke it out into its own stipend, then there's a little gray area, you could be assigning the stipend to whom you want to receive the stipend. But if it's a separate position, according to the Personnel Admin Plan, you know, it has to go through certain...
Okay.
Of course, and anything, any job description that changes, whether it's a new position or this one, it has to go in front of the Personnel Board. The Personnel Board wasn't meeting all summer, they don't meet again until, I think, first week of October. So, that was some, the job description can't go anywhere until it's approved by the Personnel Board, and it has to be approved by the board first. So...
My issue with it is, I get efficiency and ease of that and so on, and I, you know, I get their concern as well, but I still wonder if we're actually, like, losing the big picture with the details. Because one of my issues, I work in a community that has half dozen planners, has a sustainability coordinator, and I was on the planning board for eight years, and Gino's like in the top one percent of that category. I've never worked with anyone as good as him, so maybe I do have a bias here, it is, but I've actually interacted with all levels of that, and, you know, I'm confident if it was advertised, Gino would actually get it, but you never do know, you know what I mean? But I do support...
He has a clear, right, he has a very strong record of giving grants.
He talked, what, eight years? He talked a lot about carbon footprint, and about efficiencies, and about what's doing, you know, doing the, essentially, the right thing as far as environmental considerations. It was a major part of his discussions and his, I guess, slant, as he has the approach of every view to projects.
Wouldn't we be better off, we had an opportunity for people to apply for the position, including Gino, and then look at what's out there, and have us actually come to the decision that Gino is the star? Because I'm concerned that there are other stars out there who might come forward. I'm also concerned that Gino is pulled in a lot of different directions. I know I've asked him for help on different things, and I'm sure other board members have asked him for help on different things, the planning board asked him for help on different things. He's been a wonderful resource for the community.
Well, and he also works part-time in another town as well, so...
Right, so, he's already, he's already got a lot of distractions. And I, I, wouldn't we be better off with somebody whose only focus is on this, rather than somebody who's, who's got many others? But I'm saying, we don't need to make that decision today. If we, if we opened it up for a procurement process, where you threw it open, advertised it, get people to apply, maybe there'll be no other applicants, and there'll only, maybe Gino won't apply. Maybe he'll figure, I don't want this.
Well, go ahead.
Well, one, I just wanted to say, we shouldn't be putting words in Gino's mouth, I don't think he's distracted, and he did tell me that he would be dropping his one and only other commitment.
Right.
If he had to expand his hours here. So, he would be focused on Sherburne. But that's, we're not even at that, at that point yet. But, what I wanted to say is that from when I started here, the board had a policy, and as far as I know, it's still in effect, I can't show it to you in writing, but it was a policy that, to stop, to stop adding small positions, stop benefited positions, and stop adding new positions. And the first thing, if we have to add a new position, was to look to combining it with an existing position, preferably one that's already benefited, and if not benefited, at least an existing town position, when they combine, they perform, I mean, they end up being a benefited position. And the goal of that was to provide some efficiency, save money, keep the, keep the personnel list down, keep our benefits costs from rising, and try to get the most service for the community by getting to full-time positions instead of all these little part-times. And we've been pretty successful in doing that, so I think that that's where it originated out of, looking at the first thing, was adding it to an existing position.
That policy makes sense, and you also have a known want to date when you have someone like that. I will say though, you know, I've been very consistent from the very beginning, I wouldn't even vote for the town needing an article that required benefits. Somewhere, I saw something written about twenty hours with benefits, that's a complete, exactly what you're saying, that's the complete opposite of what this town needs. We're the second worst inside of 495 for our pension liabilities, this town's going to have a big, big wake-up call with that. And is Gino collecting benefits right now from the town?
No, you get to the first one.
It's a, the town planner is at twenty-two hours. That's a benefited position.
Yes, the town planner is a benefited position at twenty-two hours. Debbie, I know you...
Yes, I would, I'd like to say, oh, Debbie Demaro, Hollis Street, I just want to clarify a few things. It's very upsetting for me to hear this tonight, that you decided to do away with small jobs, and we've been talking about a nineteen-hour position. And now, you know, your last meeting, it was the talk about combining the town planner with this new position of a sustainability coordinator. So, let me just say, my mouth almost dropped about that. The last meeting that Mike Jaima was here, I remember distinctly him saying that we had been talking about, and he meant the board, for years, about acquiring a coordinator for some kind of environmental projects. I remember that distinctly, and it's probably on tape somewhere. The other thing I wanted to point out is, when we sent you guys the proposed draft for a job description, the first responsibility on the list was coordination, serve as the point contact for all town departments, all town departments, on achieving energy efficiencies and conversation by providing guidance on improvements to town facilities, equipment, and product purchasing, vehicle use, and daily operations. That's obviously very municipal. But there's, under outreach and reporting, we listed what we had in mind for an all-encompassing sustainability coordinator, because it's not just for town buildings. I mean, improving the environment is not going to be attainable by just doing public buildings, we all know that. Then the other thing is, you know, if what Mr. Williams says, that Gino's leaving Dover, that's great, but I really do feel, I mean, Gino, I'm his biggest fan. We wouldn't, we're a green community, we have MVP, all these wonderful things that he's done, and I'm sure he would make a bang-up guy, but I can't help but feel that he would be distracted doing town planning. Then my last point is, there is no way in hell that Holliston is going to accept, if you guys are still stuck on the fifty thousand dollars, Gino as being their sustainability coordinator.
I don't think you should say that. And the reason is, because I have been talking to them.
I understand that, and when I watched the YouTube of the last meeting that you guys had, you were still talking about the wrong facts, that you said that Jeff Ritter said this, and you told him this, and that it wasn't correct information.
No, it wasn't, because we didn't understand the legislative wording until it was all printed.
Well, I gave you guys the amendment, the copy of the amendment months ago.
People were talking about it being a joint position, so it was very confusing, and it's not a joint position.
And that all happened by our legislators, Dykma and Linsky got together in January, and they made this amendment for eighty thousand dollars, you are correct. That got voted down immediately, and it's always been fifty thousand dollars to be given to Sherburne to share with Holliston. And we have been dragging the Holliston Selectment along since January on this idea, no way did they want that position. And they're not spending any money, their town voted, they have to get a sustainability coordinating, just like we did. And now, you're talking about October, the Personnel Committee isn't going to meet until October, so now we're looking at the beginning of the year.
There's nothing on the agenda right now.
I understand that, and I understand politics, and I understand departments and timing and all that, but it's just like, you know, I feel like we have to keep on, you don't want to listen, you don't want to see me at every meeting complaining, and, you know. And I understand Eric's position, he's probably the most savvy of how sustainability coordinators work, and he's also very interested in saving the town money. Well, I think that the coordinator would be bringing in money, paying for their salary, let's try it out for a year. Thanks.
Do you have anything new for, we have more things to say.
One, one other point to talk to Eric's point, we thoroughly understand the town's commitment and not putting burden on the town for benefits and, we had long ago said, if it's an unbenefited position, fine, let's put out a good salary and get the right person, and whoever applies knows it's not benefited, then it's not benefited, it's not a big deal. Let's just put it out the way it is, and we are not in opposition to the idea that it's unbenefited. We're in opposition to the idea that it's unfulfilled.
Michael, last comment, and then we'll talk.
Michael, that's a fifty-four Forest Street. I mean, I've just been reading about this all the last few days, until it's gone after the last few months, but the, from what I can see, and I look at, I'd like to break it up into a few parts from my point of view, is this job description issue. I think that there's, there hasn't been enough dialogue in a sense of, there's this very compressed, basically, three little paragraphs here, and one there versus three pages. And I think there needs to be some dialogue between the citizens group and the town, that we need something that's a little bit more elaborate, so that, so that it's like, you can't just point to, oh, there's the word outreach there, and you're supposed to be satisfied. I think you need to have the dialogue to get a better job description, that somehow, however, that hasn't happened in the last few months, it needs to be done. I think, I would say, on the other hand, the job description is too broad for the town, because I don't know, we want open space and housing and trails in there. It's something that, except that there's a sustainability part of it, fine, if you want to fund more grant funding, and you think Gino's the guy that can do it, you can do that separately. I think it's a shift, it's too broad a focus. But I think you just need to collaborate on a more extensive job description, no matter how you do it, whether you're doing it with Gino or not, or you're doing it and go out to the town, you basically go out to possibly hire a new person. A policy on if you keep moving on to the other sector, how you staff it, I would suggest that, right. There seems to be, obviously, I've worked with Gino a lot of this stuff over the years. He can do a lot, there's a certain quote-unquote efficiency to maybe doing it, but there's something to see, he's got a higher rate than other people, there's probably a lot of people at a low rate, a lot of four hours, for the same amount of money. I think that going out and taking a few months to go is worth it, and when Gino turns out to be the best guy, fine. But I think that, given what the people are expecting and other possibilities, and what new blood and wonderful people who come in here, that you should go out and just give that same job description and put it out, and see how it goes, and that, yes, it will take some more time. But I think there are people in town who would like to think that there'll be more of a citizens group that gets together that would participate in that hiring process as well, and somehow, we figure out how to collaborate on the job description. It hasn't, for whatever reason, has not happened, I don't quite understand. It hasn't, for whatever reason, has not happened, I don't quite understand how we could not have a more collaborative process on the job description, to see these three little things come out of three pages, and everybody pointing fingers at each other, which I don't want to go over the past, but let's just get a job description that both sides can agree on, and without having to rehash how we got here, and move forward. And when we have a job description, then there'll be something for the personnel board agenda, and they'll meet, and we'll make a beat. I mean, this whole thing about that is moot, really. I mean, once there's something on the table, that's what they have to do, that's their job. So, and this funding issue, Hollis, I don't know how to go with it, hold this, and you fund it, but that's too much of a can of worms to go into right now. But I would just get it forward on just a job description, and whether you're just going to go out and see what you can find, if anybody applied, seems to be something that could work, and maybe it just takes more months, and more time with people.
I mean, the group did all the legwork on the job description, as you said, and I don't think anybody's disagreeing with the duties or the scope that is contained in that job description.
You're using a guide for our job description.
There's still a big gap between what you have and what they have.
Not in the job description, I don't think so. It's the method of achieving it.
We think it's...
So you could take whatever you want and put it in here, that's, you're still not going to want that. So the, if you gave me what is missing out of there, and we put it in there, it's the structure that you have more of an issue with. It's not whether the words are in there or not, it's, you have more of an issue with the structure of using this...
You have an issue that's not being resolved tonight, why don't you just agree to get together?
So you either reject it?
Okay, go ahead, I just, I want to kind of wrap up, wrap it up. I know you had, Ms. Keo, you had one comment.
I'm Barbara Keo from Great Rock Road, and I really don't want coordination with Holliston to get lost in the shuffle. I think that's really important, because two communities have bargaining power compared with one, and so I hope you'll keep that in mind.
Thank you. Marion, I'm going to kind of, after you, we're going to...
I'll be, I'll be quick.
Sorry, she had it in her for a long time.
I saw the original job description, which I thought was way too vague, and I haven't seen the new job description. And in neither, in both cases, you know, we kind of informally looked at it, some of us on planning board, although we weren't asked specifically about it, and some of the things were, well, that's already been done, you know, Gino has done that already, or the Energy Committee has worked on that, and there are other things that have not been done, by giving that. But I'd like to see more give and take about what can be done. And even as we speak tonight, Elizabeth Morris, I swear, is on television, explaining that, you know, us putting our plastic in the right bin and not using plastic straws, it's just a small piece of the puzzle. And I think if we really are serious about climate change, we need to think about looking for someone, it could be a young, new, you know, fresh out of school and hot to go, but somebody who's thinking legislatively and at much higher scale, and thinking about how the community can feed into the public process, to influence corporations, and something like political... But, you know, seriously.
Just run you for president.
I think she's somebody who's really a broad thinker and will add that kind of, remind people of the big perspective, and somehow, I'm partnered with Holliston, but I would say partner with as many people as you can, many towns, the state, I want somebody who thinks big.
I think what we've gathered tonight from everybody's discussion is that incorporating it into the town planner job description's not going to work. I think we need to go back. I think what Marion said is true, and I think that was the issue we had with the job description you sent us, that was a little too vague, this one's too short, so we could...
I think the solution going forward is...
Write a job description.
Write a job description that the advocates for the town board and David and this board agree with.
Can we just laugh, right?
Yes, can we, let's meet in the next week.
Well, I think there has been collaboration, I think there needs additional collaboration, but let's...
We have to take it out of the town planner.
I agree, I was, I wanted to do that last time, I see there's a lot of people that don't want to do that, and I agree with you now, let's do a separate job description for the sustainability coordinator, let's work with the upper Charles Action Group or something. Okay, climate action, sorry. And let's just get it done and get it to the personnel board as soon as we possibly can.
Thank you.
So...
We wanted to come back to you, though.
Yeah, well, yeah, we have, we still have to approve it, obviously, but I think if we have, let's talk about who's going to do this, because it's David, and it's going to be, I have to put it through Fred. Through me. And then, who from our board would, I can't right now, I just got too many other...
We need to be representative.
Be a representative from the select board, I think somebody should. Either Paul, do you, can you do it?
Can I make a motion for Eric? Isn't that in your wheelhouse?
Well, Paul, Eric's very busy with the library stuff, I don't want to put it in more of his name.
There's some other issues in town.
I'm doing school contract negotiations, I think everybody, we've got to kind of split it up, and Paul, I think, has been involved with this, so Paul could, Paul could do it from our board.
I'd be willing to, if you wanted me to, but Paul won't.
But I think so many of us have so many other commitments related to the board that...
I'm happy to defer to Eric if he wants.
So, great, so David will coordinate that, I think, we're in good...
What's the process, though?
Sorry it's taken so long, but I, but we have been working on it, I just want everybody to know that, that it's not just sitting, we've talked about it way too much, actually.
Thanks for your response. George, question on the process, though, will it come back to us, or will that be after the personnel board? It's going to be a sequence.
No, I think we approve it before it goes to personnel, right?
Typically, you would...
You guys have to sign off, since it's going to be pointing, you have to sign off before it gets to... Okay, so we have, do we have any other selectman reports?
Yeah, I have a brief one.
Okay, could you guys leave quietly?
Are you Andy's mother?
Can you guys take that outside? Alicia.
Marion, my daughter, were good friends in high school.
I think a lot of people in town already know about the town, the Forest and Trail Association and the Rural Land Foundation are hosting the Massachusetts Town Forest Conference on Saturday. It starts at 9:00 AM at the Community Center, and there are all sorts of wonderful activities for children and adults alike. I think already 155 people have signed up for it. Kelly McFlintock has really led this, but if, for the children, there's a birdhouse, bat box building, cider press, Steve Jeremiah is going to have a portable sawmill demonstration, so anyone who's around on Saturday...
Wants to lose a limb.
Who wants, just to learn about town forest management and handling of invasive species, I would encourage you to go.
Thank you. Anything else? If not, then we have an executive session, language, MGL Chapter 30A, Section 21A, Subsection 3, discuss strategy with respect to threat and potential litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigation position of the town, and the chair so declares library. An MGL Chapter 30A, Section 21A, Subsection 2, to conduct a strategy session in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, fire chief, contract. The select board will not return to public session, I do declare, whatever in there. I need a second, and we will call...
Can I do a point of order before, because I might have to ask this during public versus executive? Oh, you know, never mind. I thought no one was here in the library, so I was going to take that order, says Aaron.
They're all here, they've been texting me.
No, yeah.
So, the motion is second, okay, by Mr. Waldron, having a second, we'll now roll call vote, Ms. Durensis.
I have a question.
Yes.
If, if we're able to reach an agreement with the chief...
Great question.
Don't we want to come back in the public session?
Oh, okay.
And vote it?
Right, okay. So, we may, I'm going to change that to the select board may return to public session. Yeah, can I say that?
Yeah, the motion should be that we may return.
The select board may return to public session.
Right.
I think the line is you have to either...
Will or will not. Okay, we will return to public session.
And then we can always come in here and say we're...
Say, okay, okay.
For those of us who may be waiting outside, will we be notified when you return to public?
We'll open the door.
Yes.
When we go to public session, the door has to be open.
We'll let you know. Okay, so the select, my motion is the select board will return to, whatever I said before, you still second that?
Second.
Okay. Mr. Durensis.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mr. Walden.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Jesus.
That's my thing.
I write "I," by the way, just so you know.
I am voted five to zero, the open session is now closed, we will not be, and we will
be returning to public, to open session, we are now in executive session. We're going to discuss the library.